Good evening, everyone. Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out tonight for this Wednesday, May 7, 2025, meeting of the Lakewood Planning Commission. For all of you joining us in chambers tonight, we welcome you. We're happy you're here. Those tuning in on Lakewood8s or LakewoodSpeaks.org, thank you also for watching tonight. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Buckley?
Here.
Commissioner Grably Unis?
Here.
Commissioner Kolkmeyer?
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Overall?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. Before we begin tonight, our planning director, Mr. Travis Parker, has asked to make a few brief remarks about the case. And my apologies, Mr. Clerk, for the record, can you read in tonight's case to the record?
Item 3, SP 22-0010 and WI 24-0003 for 777 South Yarrow Street.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Planning Commission. I just want to take a couple minutes and talk a little bit about this step in the process and why we're here tonight. It's become clear over the past couple of years that there's some pretty significant misunderstandings of how the development process works and what city planners do and what our actual authority is. When I talk about the role of a development review planner, I like to use a police analogy. So when we have police officers out patrolling the streets, they're experts in the laws that they can enforce. They know that they can pull people over for speeding, for a broken taillight, for not using a turn signal. And conversely, they know that they're not allowed to make up their own reasons for pulling people over. They can't pull somebody over because they don't like the color of their car or who's driving the car. They can't go to a street with a posted 45 mile an hour speed limit and say, you know, that's a little fast for this neighborhood. I'm going to pull over people at 35 miles an hour, right? Or decide there's too many cars on the road and pull over a few people to ease traffic. Development review staff follows those same principles, right? They are experts in the zoning code. They review every single development that takes place in the city of Lakewood, every building that goes up, right? And if we get applications for buildings that aren't allowed or for uses that aren't allowed under our zoning code, those get kicked up to the Planning Commission or the City Council for public hearings and go through a long public review process. But applications for buildings that are allowed are reviewed by staff for their compliance with the dozens or hundreds of particular regulations in the zoning ordinance that might apply to that particular development. And if an application doesn't meet one of those regulations, we push it back and we say, you know, the developer needs to change their plans to make that, to meet that development requirement, or they can't move forward in the process, right? But just like with the police, we can't make up our own regulations. We can't deny a project because we don't like a building or because we don't like a developer, right? We can't decide that a six-foot height limit on a site should be three because that'd be more appropriate there. Or if the development require, the zoning ordinance requires 100 parking spaces, we want to see 200 there. Or, you know, if a building's going up next to a beloved park, we'd love to have a buffer there. We can't make up the regulation to provide that buffer, right? So site plan review is objective. It is checking off, you know, those dozens or hundreds of individual zoning requirements on a property, and therefore, it doesn't go for, generally for a Planning Commission or City Council review for a public process. So why is this one here tonight? Well, there is a lot of understandable frustration among a lot of community members about the idea of this development happening, right? There's anxiety about a large new building next to a beloved public park, right? There's fear of a lot of new drivers on our neighborhood roads and frustration with the idea of a bunch of new neighbors joining us walking around, you know, our Belmar Park. And while this frustration is understandable and possibly justified, the trouble comes when it's directed at staff. And attacks on staff for being incompetent or malfeasant or acting in bad faith demonstrate a fundamental misunderstanding of the good and hard work that's done by people that are experts in both the development project and our city's zoning code. Staff has worked on this project for two years, reviewing every aspect of this application. They've done a thorough and a thoroughly competent job of this review, as you will see in tonight's staff presentation. I didn't refer this item to the PC because I expected that the Planning Commission would reach a different result. I referred it because for a development as important and controversial as this, and as fraught with misunderstanding as this is, I thought it's vital to have transparency for the community into what this process is, what the criteria these types of projects are reviewed by, and the fact that when staff or the Planning Commission approves a project, it's not a judgment call on the quality of the project, but a legal review for compliance with the existing zoning regs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I believe first up with this case, we have a brief presentation by the applicant. All right, welcome, sir. Please state your name and say your say.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sam Kasperic, and I am the co-founder and managing partner of Kyroy Residential, the applicant. I'm joined tonight with my business partner Tyler Sibley, who's also a principal at Kyroy, and John Paul Cossepp, who's our development manager. We appreciate the opportunity to be before you this morning to discuss our project at 777 South Yarrow Street, one that we've been working on for many years. Let me just begin with a brief introduction about Kyroy Residential. We are a full-service vertically integrated multifamily platform that develops, acquires, and manages apartment communities nationally. While our company is corporately headquartered in San Antonio, Texas, where I co-founded the business back in 2002, I moved back here in 2011, 14 years ago, to return home to establish our corporate headquarters, our regional headquarters here in the Denver metro area. This, the Denver metro region is very special to me. I met my wife here. Actually, interestingly, I met her at the apartment community I lived at in the year 2000, over in the Lowry part of town. We then moved down to San Antonio to found what is today Kyroy Residential, and then moved back in 2011 primarily to raise our kids here in Colorado. I have two sons, the youngest of which will hopefully go off to college here in the next three months, fingers crossed. At Kyroy, we take tremendous pride in being a detail-oriented, resident-focused boutique developer. I think it's really important for me to point out that we are not a high-volume production builder. We do two or three starts a year nationally, so that may be only about one start a year here in the Denver metro area. So each project to us is very special, limited, carefully crafted to make sure that it integrates with the local community and that we build buildings and communities that really connect with the residents that are going to live there. As an operator of apartments, we currently manage approximately 30,000 apartment units nationally, of which 5,702 of those homes are right here in the Denver metro area. We are also an organization that has 720 associates, 218 of those associates call the Denver metro area home as well. We're proud to be a company that reflects the diversity of the communities we serve. We are almost exactly a 50/50 male/female organization. And when you look at our 720 associates, we're actually a majority-minority company. Culture and community both matter very deeply to us. We've been named the number one best place to work in several, both regional and national surveys. And in 2023, something that we're very proud of in our group, we were honored with the grand award from the Apartment Association of Metro Denver as the top property management company in our category. We are a very professional organization, and we take what we do very seriously, and we take care of our residents every day in a very serious way. With regards to our project at 777 South Yarrow Street, we acquired this special property approximately four years ago with a clear understanding of its zoning parameters and the city's vision and support for multifamily housing on this site. Since then, we've worked closely and diligently with city staff to develop a plan that both meets all zoning requirements and provides for much-needed rental housing for members of the local workforce, particularly those who either cannot or choose to not buy a home in the community. So on behalf of Tyler, JP and I, you know, we want to express our deep appreciation to city staff for their dedication and support throughout this lengthy process. Their collaboration has been invaluable. And then lastly, we want to thank the Planning Commission for your time and thoughtful consideration this evening. We respectfully ask for your support in approving our major site plan in minor waiver requests so that we can construct and operate this thoughtfully designed community, one that we believe will have a strong and lasting addition to the city for years to come. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other statements by the applicant? It does not appear so, and any questions from the commission? Very well, we'll move on. I invite Bria Pafford from Planning Staff, senior planner, to step forward and make the staff presentation.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman Buckley and Planning Commissioners. As Mr. Buckley said, my name is Bria Pafford, and I will be presenting for staff tonight. In the interest of everyone's time this evening, I'm going to give a bit of abbreviated presentation from what was posted online on Lakewood Speaks. If there are specific questions about standards that were addressed in the full presentation that I may not go into as much detail tonight, we can circle back to those as you guys have questions after the presentation. So let's get started. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting information on the major site plan case SP 2210 and minor waiver request WI 243 located at 777 South Yarrow Street. The project site is located within the mixed-use urban core zone district, commonly referred to as downtown Lakewood. The vicinity map on this slide depicts the MCU district overlaid with an aerial image. The project site is located near the southern edge of the zone district, west of Wadsworth Boulevard. Zooming in a little bit, you see here that the project's front South Yarrow Street and is surrounded by Belmar Park on three sides, to the north, west, and south. The area initially developed in the 1970s and 80s as part of the phased Irongate Executive Plaza office complex, which included 777 South Yarrow, as well as the property to the east between South Yarrow Street and Wadsworth. The applicant is proposing to redevelop the five-acre site with a six-story, 411-unit multifamily building. 561 parking spaces will be accommodated within a parking structure that is internal to the building. The project will include an 8,600-square-foot parkland dedication in the southwest corner of the site where the historic pump house is located. The existing pump house, which is currently on private property, is covered by a municipal purposes easement, which will be vacated after the deed conveying this land to the city has been recorded. In its current configuration, the gross site area is 5.2 acres in size. After the land dedication, parkland dedication, the net area or developable area will be 5.05 acres, as depicted here outlined in red, the property boundary. Vehicle circulation and emergency vehicle access is accommodated via private driveway that has two access points, one on the north and one on the south side of the building. Access to the parking garage is internal to the site, and you can enter the garage from the north and south sides of the building here and here. Vehicle access located to the west of the garage is intended for emergency service vehicles and service district vehicles. A change in surface materials proposed for the portion of the driveway where access will be restricted just to those emergency service vehicles. Sidewalks are proposed from the public sidewalk on Yarrow Street to the ground floor entry stoops of each of the ground floor units, as well as project plazas and bicycle parking facilities. It also connects to the public trail in the park on the west. The proposed building footprint is just under 129,000 square feet. This includes approximately 35,000 square feet of parking structure. Like I said, it is wrapped on all sides by residential units, and the outline is kind of shown there as a dash line. The project will include proposed plazas, roof amenities, and landscaped areas. The zoning ordinance defines open space areas as areas that are designed or intended for the use and enjoyment of residents and/or the public in general, and that are not occupied by structures, parking lots, or driveways. While tonight's hearing is related to the zoning review process, it's important to understand that the land development process is really a phased process that starts well before the city gets involved and continues on until the building has occupancy. While tonight's hearing is related to the zoning review process, it's important to understand that the project goes through each of these phases. Depending on the type of the development, this process can take upwards of five to 10 years to get from the initial phase point to where the building can be occupied. The zoning review for land development proposal is just one step in this much larger process. Most land development proposals require significant financial investment that precedes the formal land development application process with the city. At a minimum, these investments may include costs associated with professional architects, engineers, landscape architects, surveyors, lighting designers, et cetera. These are all hired as design professionals to help design and prepare plans and documents that are required for the city's review process. Decisions that are made by the development team in that initial phase with respect to land acquisition, project feasibility, pro forma targets, will inform the project as it continues the rest of the way through the process. Once all required plan approvals and construction phase financing has been secured and permit fees are paid, the construction phase can then begin. If we kind of zoom in a little bit and look at the phase that, you know, land development review phase, plan review phase, we see that compliance with adopted zoning regulations is also only one part of the overall land development process that is required for a project to secure building permits. In addition to the major site plan, there are other design plans, reports, and construction documents that do not fall under the planning director's authority to review or approve. Civil engineering construction documents and reports are required with a formal site plan application, and they are reviewed and approved concurrently by the city engineer. The planning director is responsible for reviewing and rendering a decision on the major site plan. Separately from the city's review and permit process, a developer must also complete plan review, approval, and permitting processes for the sewer and water district, fire district, and dry utility agencies that provide gas, electricity, and communication service to the project. A courtesy referral of the site plan application is sent to applicable utility districts and service providers to inform them of a development proposal. The applicant is responsible for securing approvals and permits that are applicable to each service district and agency. Separate agency review and permits are really not required for the major site plan approval. They generally are required before permits get issued. Article 2 of the Lakewood zoning ordinance establishes the process and procedures related to the zoning review in the city of Lakewood. The site plan is intended to demonstrate compliance with the zoning regulations pursuant to the process outlined in the zoning ordinance. The planning director has authority to review and render a decision on a major site plan application, or the planning director can choose to refer the application to the Planning Commission to then hear and render a decision, as we're here tonight. A minor waiver is required whenever an applicant has proposed a superior design modification to a design standard within the zoning ordinance. Recommendations and decisions regarding waiver applications shall be based on the review criteria that's outlined in the zoning ordinance. Like the site plan process, the planning director has the authority to review and render a decision on a minor waiver application, or the planning director can refer the application to the Planning Commission to hear and render a decision. Notice of the public hearing was posted on the project site, posted at City Hall, published in the newspaper of record, and published on the city's website. Recommendations and decisions regarding the major site plan shall be based on the following criteria listed on this slide. First, the site plan shall comply with the standards outlined in Articles 3 through 8, 10, and 13. The director shall evaluate how well the proposed modifications contribute to the overall performance of the site, and how well the proposed changes meet the standards in those Articles 3 through 8, 10, and 13. I will mention that Articles 3 and 10 do not have standards applicable to this specific land development proposal. Article 3 is applicable to development applications that are seeking to be initially zoned or rezoned into a new zone district, and it doesn't really have any specific design development standards that are applicable to a site plan review. Article 10 outlines standards and review processes applicable to the wireless communication facilities, and the proposed multifamily development does not include any existing to remain or proposed wireless communication facilities. The mixed-use urban core zone district is intended to allow and accommodate opportunities for higher-density mixed-use development with an urban characteristic located in downtown Lakewood. Zoning standards within the urban context are intended to achieve a pedestrian-friendly environment and street network that is favorable to pedestrian and bicycle access. The context requires buildings to be located within a short distance of the adjacent public street, with parking located either in a structure or to the side or rear of the building, not in front of the building between the building and the street. Within the MCU zone district, the mixture of uses is achieved within this entire district boundary. This slide here depicts the land use composition within the district, and as you can see, most of the district is primarily commercial land uses and commercial blocks, with residential uses and blocks located really on the periphery of the zone district. The major site plan was reviewed to ensure compliance with applicable zoning standards and evaluated for site performance and consistency with Articles 4 through 8 and 13 of the zoning ordinance. Article 4 identifies land use categories and the relationship of those land uses within the zone district. Pursuant to Table 1741 shown here on the slide, the proposed multifamily land use is a permitted use within the MCU zone district. Article 5 standards regulate the placement and height of buildings, which applies to all new development and redevelopment. The project complies with the applicable general standards and mixed-use zone district standards. The development proposal includes a minor waiver request to the facade stepback requirement, which is in Article 5, and we'll talk about that a little bit later in this presentation. We'll address that in just a minute. This chart identifies dimensional standards that are applicable to new projects within the MCU district. The site plan was reviewed to verify that the project satisfies building height, setbacks, open space, build-to-zone, and minimum building story requirements. open space, build-to-zone, and minimum building story requirements. Article 6 establishes site and building design standards for new residential development in Lakewood. This project is satisfying the building design, screening, pedestrian, circulation, landscape design, fence, and lighting standards. And I'm going to run through these slides kind of briefly, so we can come back to these if there are specific questions. Section 1762 includes standards that inform specific aspects of the building design and architecture. The project satisfies building elevation, transparency, or window requirements, building entry, and roof-land contrast standards. Exterior building elements and rooftop equipment will be screened from view. Roof drains are architecturally integrated into the building. Screening is provided for utility structures and building service areas. Trash and recycling collection areas will be located interior to the building. Internal sidewalks provide pedestrian access to primary building entrances, onsite facilities, public sidewalk, and public trail to the west of the site. The project sidewalks comply with the applicable design standards. The landscape design includes a diverse plant selection, which is appropriate for our arid climate. The project exceeds the minimum street tree and onsite tree and shrub quantity requirements outlined in Section 1765. New trees and shrubs will comply with the minimum size requirements. The project will satisfy the tree replacement requirements through a combination of new trees and fees in lieu. To summarize, seven existing trees on the property are being protected. 66 trees are being removed. 174 new deciduous evergreen and ornamental trees will be planted with this project. A $415,200 mitigation fee is also due prior to site plan approval. Project fencing will satisfy the style, material, height, and placement requirements. Exterior lighting has been designed to achieve a zero-foot candle reading at all property lines. Fixtures are full cutoff and directed down towards the ground, and energy-efficient outdoor lighting is specified. Article 7 establishes building and site design standards for non-residential developments, think commercial development. In general, these standards in Article 7 do not apply to this project because the project is a residential use and these standards are for non-residential projects. However, there is a more restrictive applicability statement located in Section 1775, the open space and site amenity standards, that states the open space and site amenity requirement is applicable to residential developments when the site is greater than two acres. So we have reviewed the project for this standard, and it is being satisfied. We'll go through it really quick. The site has been designed to incorporate five plaza areas that exceed the minimum area required within the MCU Zone District. In addition to seating, each plaza incorporates two additional pedestrian elements to satisfy the enhanced pedestrian amenity requirement. Article 8 establishes parking standards for each land use. The project is satisfying the general visitor, bicycle, electric vehicle charging, and building loading standards. The proposed parking garage will accommodate a total of 561 spaces, which exceeds the minimum parking ratio that is required. Bicycle parking is accommodated via 42 short-term parking racks and 208 long-term parking spaces. 12 parking spaces will include electric vehicle charging stations, in addition to 109 spaces which will be constructed as EV-capable spaces, so that additional charging can be added to the project and accommodated as warranted by future demand. The site has been designed to address accessible, building loading, vision clearance, and stacking And finally, we've arrived to Article 13. The site plan was reviewed for compliance with Article 13 Enhanced Development Menu Standards. The project is achieving the 50 required points through the nine menu items that I've listed here on this slide. So before we switch gears and take a closer look at the minor waiver requests, I'd just like to recap that the purpose of the major site plan review is to ensure that the development is evaluated for compliance with the applicable zoning standards. Additionally, the proposed modifications are evaluated to make sure that the site functions and performs as intended. Discussing a little bit about the minor waiver request. The facade step back requires buildings that are taller than 45 feet in height to provide a 10-foot facade step back at that 45-foot height, and another 10-foot step back for every additional 30 feet above that 45 feet in height that the building exceeds. The applicant is requesting relief from the facade step back to allow minor building encroachments above the 45 feet in building height and within the 10-foot step back area. The minor waiver will allow architectural elements, including the roof overhang, cantilevered rooftop open space, balcony canopies, and unit privacy partitions, to extend into that 10-foot facade step back. It will also allow a minor encroachment associated with several of the four-story units, which is occurring due to the six-foot elevation grade change along the public right-of-way adjacent to the front building facade. The units on either end of this building have a slightly larger encroachment, which lessens as you move towards the central part of the building facade. So this is a view looking from the southeast corner of the building. And then here we have another view of the building looking from the northeast corner, and as you can see, that encroachment in those four-story units is probably the most significant at the corner, and then kind of tapers down to nothing as you move to the center of the building. This slide provides a visual comparison of the proposed building design. The proposed building shown in the top images, along with the alternative building facade design, that complies with the strict application of the facade step back. It is possible for this project to move forward with a building design that does not require a minor waiver as requested. The four-story units can be reconfigured, and the exterior architectural roof and balcony elements can be eliminated from this building proposal. But these modifications would not necessarily result in superior building design. The proposed architectural elements are intended to create a comfortable outdoor space and help activate that visually accessible facade step back space. Imposing a strict application of the standard will not change the number of proposed dwelling units for the project. It also will not change the building mass and form, which is permitted under the existing zoning regulations. A detailed evaluation of the seven minor waiver review criteria was provided in the staff report and is summarized on this slide. Based on the information provided in the staff report and the details I've highlighted in this presentation, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the findings of fact in order, as presented in the staff report, and approve Site Plan Case SP 2210 and Minor Waiver Case WI 243, once the procedural items that are all detailed on the following slide have been completed. This slide shows the next steps from where we are today to where the project can secure permits and start construction. A decision by the planning commission to approve the site plan with the waiver will allow the project to proceed with the other related approvals that must take place before construction can begin. This slide lists the next steps in the land development review process if planning commission finds the site plan is approvable in form tonight. Before the final site plan and civil plan approvals can be issued, first, the plat must be approved and recorded, together with a water district easement, parkland conveyance deed, and the public improvements agreement. The applicant will also need to submit a payment for the tree mitigation fee. Building permits will be released for the project's construction only after the project has secured approval for the major site plan, civil construction documents, and building permit plans, and the developer has paid all fees that are due prior to the issue of building permit. This concludes staff's presentation tonight for major site plan and minor waiver. I will go ahead and take a seat and be available if the planning commission has any questions or would like clarification.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Oh, and Ms. Pafford, we have a commissioner overall would like to ask a question.
Sure.
Commissioner.
If you sit down, will you also still have access?
Do you want to tell us a specific slide?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know what slide it is?
I think it was two or three slides ago.
Two or three slides. How about we just roll back? Can you control that time? Can I?
One more. One more, please.
This one?
Thank you.
Okay.
So it's my understanding, then, that today, what the planning commission is being asked to contemplate is the difference between these two visuals. Is that correct?
The planning commission is being asked to consider... Hold on. The planning? The planning commission is being asked to consider a minor waiver application. This is just to demonstrate that the project does not need a minor waiver application. Obviously, if it is denied by the planning commission, the waiver, there is an alternative that can be revised that would not need a waiver, and so then it would just be really the planning commission making a decision on the major site plan.
Thank you.
All right. Other commissioner questions? Yeah, I might have some questions for staff later. I think in the interest of hearing from as many members of the public as we can, I would prefer to move directly into public comment. So we have about 59 people, if I'm roughly counting, signed in on the sheet. Not every single person here, but most of them did request to speak. We have some requests to pool time as well. So, you know, just some quick math, right? We got about 60 people, more or less, who want to speak. Three-minute time limit per speaker, so we could be here for about three hours here and comment. Not every single person is signed up here, so we'll see how long it actually takes, but it could be about that. So let's just dive in, I propose. Now, there are some people who have requested to pool time. In general, if you've signed up to speak, you will have three minutes to speak. Some groups of people have asked to pool time, and so if you have four people in a group, you can pool time for up to 10 minutes. So I'm going to start off by asking anyone who has asked to pool time to raise your hand, and we'll have you speak first, and then while we make sure that all your companions are here. All right, so gentlemen in the coat and the blue shirt over here, can I have your name and which people are supporting you in pooling time?
I'm Kathy White.
Oh.
Michael Pardo. And I don't remember...
If we could please have the gentleman step up to the podium?
Hi, my name is Michael Pardo. I am not sure the names of everybody who requested to donate their time to me. I think there were at least four people, so it should be up to 10 minutes.
If you requested to donate time to Mr. Pardo, could you raise your hand? Okay, I see we have three folks here, so you may go ahead for 10 minutes. And Mr. Clerk, can you set Mr. Pardo's timer for the 10 minutes? And I believe the way this works, you will have... The light will go yellow when you are getting low on time, and red will be your 10-minute mark, and I will politely ask you to conclude your remarks. With that, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, so I had a PowerPoint presentation that I had sent to the clerk ahead of time. Do you have that?
You might have to go to the back side.
Okay, so while we're waiting... Okay, there we go. Thank you so much. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dr. Michael Pardo. I am an ecologist and bird biologist, so I got my PhD in ecology from Cornell University. Then I completed a postdoctoral fellowship at CSU here in Colorado, where I've stayed ever since, and I currently work for the Cornell Lab of Ornithology, where I study bird populations, but I'm here in my capacity just as a private citizen who has visited Belmar Park and cares a great deal about the park, and, you know, appreciates that part of the community. So as I'm sure you're aware, Lakewood zoning law requires considering the environment in the development. So in Article 17.4 of the zoning code, it says that the director shall consider, among other relevant factors, the goals and policies set forth in the comprehensive plan. Now, one of the things mentioned in the comprehensive plan is that, quote, "Lakewood will be a leader in sustainability principles, practices, and education. Without a healthy environment, a community would be unable to achieve economic success and well-being." And that's absolutely true, and these words are not just platitudes. They are really important, as I'm sure you'll agree. And so what I'd like to talk about today is the environmental impact of the proposed development. And I want to be clear, I'm not anti-development in general. I think that housing is incredibly important, and I understand the need to have more housing in the community. My concern about this particular development proposal is that the proposed building is so close to the park, and I think that will result in unusually negative impacts on the environment and the wildlife that requires this park. So Belmar Park is incredibly biodiverse. It has, on the Citizen Science Database eBird, at least 245 bird species have been documented in the park, and they're not just passing through, a lot of these animals are breeding in the park, which demonstrates this park's critical status as important habitat for these species. So for example, this is an American avocet chick at Belmar Park, indicating that this species breeds in the park. This is a great blue heron, again, with chicks breeding in Belmar Park. Here are spotted sandpiper chicks. Again, these animals, these baby animals would only be here if these species were breeding in the park, which they are. Mallard duck with ducklings. And it's not just birds. This is a snapping turtle laying eggs in the park, indicating that reptiles are breeding here, too. And these are dragonfly molts. So dragonflies are really important in vertebrate. They help control a lot of pest insects, and these molts from young dragonflies molting into larger adult stages indicates that dragonflies are also breeding here. So this is just, you know, a small subset of the biodiversity that calls this park home, but I want to focus in on birds, one, you know, because that's my area of expertise. So that's what I know the most about. And in my professional estimation, this particular development project would be a disaster for birds in Belmar Park. So in the United States, the top three human-caused sources of bird mortality are habitat destruction, window collisions, and domestic cats. And I think that this project would worsen all three of these threats to birds, so it would kind of be a triple whammy for the birds in the park. Now, first, let's talk about habitat destruction. So my understanding is that the proposed development would require removing approximately 65 large mature trees at the edge of the park, and these trees are really important habitat for birds and other animals. So a lot of wildlife needs large trees to breed. It's not the same if the tree is young. It just doesn't have the same capacity to have cavities in other places in the tree for animals to breed. So in this photo here, you can see a Sase Phoebe feeding a fledgling in one of the trees that's slated for removal. And replacing these mature trees, because they're so old, would take a really long time. It would take decades for trees to grow to this size, if they were even replanted, and in the meantime, that just removes that potential breeding habitat from animals that use the park. Even if those trees are technically outside the park boundary, a lot of the wildlife that people enjoy in the park may depend on them for breeding. Now, window collisions is another one of the major sources of mortality for birds. So every year in the U.S. alone, somewhere between 1.3 and 1.6 billion birds die from crashing into windows. And the reason why birds crash into windows is because the windows reflect the sky and vegetation, and so to birds, it just appears like it's more habitat to fly into. And studies have found that bird collisions are especially likely to happen when structures are near to bird habitat. So when they're close to the vegetation that the birds are using, the birds are more likely to fly into those windows. And so again, this comes back to my main point here, which is I think the building is just too close to this critical habitat. If it were further away, this would be less of an issue. And as I mentioned, you know, I kind of covered that already, but birds are more likely to crash into windows when the buildings are close to the vegetation. Another potential issue with this site is light pollution. So light pollution in general is particularly destructive for birds... So, light pollution, in general, is particularly destructive for birds on migration, because birds usually migrate at night, and when there's a lot of light pollution in the area they're migrating through, that disorients them and makes them more likely to crash into windows. And because Belmar Park is an important stopover point for birds on migration, there's going to be a lot of birds passing through there. So, having a big structure with lots of windows and light at night is particularly hazardous for them. Now, the third major threat to birds is pet cats. And of course, you know, lots of people have pet cats. I have a cat. I love cats. But there's no getting around the fact that cats kill 2.4 billion birds per year in the U.S. alone. And the thing about pet cats is that most of them don't wander that far from home. Studies have found that the majority of cats will stay within a few hundred yards of their home. But the thing is, if you have a big apartment building with lots of residents, many of whom will have cats, living close to this park, that territory that the cats occupy is going to include the park. So, you're going to end up with a lot of cats wandering into Belmar Park and killing the wildlife there. And again, if the building were further away, that would be less of an issue, because most of those cats won't get far enough to get into the park where the birds are. Another issue with this site is the height of the proposed building. So, the... My understanding is this building would be between five to six stories tall, and that's a lot taller than the previous office building that was at this site. So, the issue with having such a tall building in such close proximity to the park is that it would shade the pond in the park. And studies have found that when parks are shaded, it tends to decrease aquatic algae, which then has the effect of increasing the mosquito population and decreasing the frog population. So, you're removing wildlife that people like to see, and then increasing the population of mosquitoes, which are nuisance, and also potentially more than a nuisance, because they can carry diseases like West Nile virus. So, the final thing I want to talk about is noise pollution. So, noise pollution, again, for wildlife, it's more than just a nuisance. It interferes with their ability to communicate vocally, and that's how a lot of animals find mates and find food. So, for example, bats rely on sound to find their prey, and in very noisy environments, it makes it harder for them to do that, and it makes it harder for a lot of animals that rely on sound to find their mates to be able to breed. And so, when you have a really large residential building with a lot of traffic coming in and out, plus the construction that will occur during the project itself, all of that is going to generate a lot of noise, which is going to negatively impact the wildlife, again, because the building is so close to the wildlife habitat. Now, again, I want to reiterate, I'm not anti-development. I'm not saying we shouldn't have more housing in Lakewood. Obviously, that's something that the community needs. But my concern is that the proposed development site is too close to the park. And I think one of the things that could mitigate this is having a buffer zone between the park and the development. So, for example, Fort Collins is, you know, a city in Colorado, which is actually where I live, and they require having a habitat buffer zone around any kind of natural area. And as far as I can tell, as, you know, somebody who's been a resident of Fort Collins for many years, this hasn't hindered development in the city, and it seems to work just fine. So, I think that that is potentially something that could be considered here as well. Another potential mitigation that could be done is to require the developer to include anti-collision coatings on the windows, and this has been shown to really reduce the risk of birds crashing into the windows, because it prevents the windows from reflecting things that look like sky or habitat to the birds. Another thing that could be done is to reduce the height of the building. Again, I realize some of these may not be in line with the vision that the developer has, but if they're combined with moving the property further away, reducing the height of the building could prevent the pond from being shaded, which would mitigate those ecological issues with shading of the pond, changing the whole ecosystem of the pond, and increasing the mosquito population. And then also, reducing the light produced by this building, especially light on the side of the building facing the park, could help mitigate bird collisions during migration. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And there may be some questions from the Commission. Commissioners... Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you. I just had a question on buffer zone. What is the suggested or recommended buffer zone for... How far are you suggesting the building would need to move?
That's a good question. I think it would need to be a balance between, you know, what is feasible in the current situation, but I think having it at least several hundred yards further away would help, at least in the case of cats. You know, they typically don't go more than maybe 500 yards or so from their home, and so having it be at least several hundred yards further away, I think, would help in that regard. But basically, as far as bird collisions go, again, if it's going to... If it's several hundred yards away from the vegetation in the park, that would help mitigate the risk of collisions.
Thank you.
Yeah. Dr. Pardo, I noted on the applicant's site plan that they have designed the exterior lighting fixtures to achieve a zero-foot candle lighting intensity at the property lines. In your view, talking about lighting concerns, is that enough, or how can you mitigate beyond zero to help the birds?
So, I think to give you a good answer to that, I'd have to look into it a little bit. I'd be more than happy to do that, and then get back to you with some more specifics. But I don't want to just give you, you know, a figure off the top of my head that might not be accurate.
Certainly. And about the window coatings you mentioned, yeah, how exactly do those work and are applied? And, I mean, what's the relative cost of a window with one of these coatings that's more bird-friendly versus a window without one?
Yeah. Again, that's a great question. I'd be more than happy to look into the specifics on what the cost is. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but I can... When would you need to have some information on that in order for it to be pertinent? I mean, I guess you're probably trying to make a decision tonight.
Yeah. Tonight, we could be making a decision.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I don't have the numbers on what that would cost off the top of my head. I know it is something that is often implemented, so it is, you know, it is something that's been done before. I don't know exactly what that would cost.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your time, Mr. Pardo.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Who else has signed up to pool time? Ms. Hopkins, is it? Yeah. Come forward. Who has donated time with you? Yeah, Ms. Hopkins, who has donated you the time to pool?
Raising the hands.
Okay. Thank you very much, all of you.
My name is Regina Hopkins. I am founder and director of... For the nonprofit organization Save Belmar Park, Inc. My comments tonight will be about how Cairo's master site plan, as proposed, is not consistent with the Lakewood zoning codes, which is something the public should expect the city of Lakewood to enforce. There are two types of inconsistencies I'll be talking about, which are how the proposed project doesn't conform to the standards outlined in Lakewood zoning ordinance articles, and how it doesn't contribute to the overall performance of the site. The Lakewood zoning code protects citizens' property investments by requiring that new infill developments are at a minimum reasonably compatible with the existing neighborhood and character appeal. The one residential area closest to this development is Belmar Commons Townhomes, which are circled in yellow on this map. The first and most obvious aspect of noncompliance with the zoning code is how Cairo's proposed apartment building consumes this entire property, a zero-lot line, six-story gigantic behemoth, and how it towers over everything around it, from the two-story Belmar Commons Townhomes to the northeast, to the tranquil undeveloped Belmar Park property on the three sides. This project is not consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Belmar Commons townhome owners have property rights no less valuable than Cairo's, and they purchase properties here expecting the city of Lakewood to follow its ordinances that are intended to protect everyone's rights, not just the rights of developers. The sheer height of the proposed Cairo building is disturbing and inconsistent with the neighborhood. This zero-lot line, big-box building is not unique. We've all driven past them, but have you ever walked down a sidewalk next to one? How imposing and intimidating does that feel? The density of this development is also inconsistent with the existing infrastructure in the neighborhood. It doesn't take any special training to imagine how future residents coming and going from the 411-unit structure will jam up the small streets in that neighborhood and will be lined with overflow parking. The noise and car exhaust alone will forever change the character of this neighborhood. The Lakewood zoning code has specific language about transitions between heights of buildings, specifically because of how jarring it is when those transitions are missing. The zoning code requirements are thoughtfully written and give developers good guidelines, but unfortunately, they don't seem to be applied here. The character of a neighborhood is not just what you see, it's the level of activity, the noise, the car exhaust, and the people present, and the hours when the neighborhood is busy and when it's quiet. These documents that the citizens rely on for the city officials to obey must work together. The comprehensive plan and master park plan are just words on paper if zoning code rules are not consistent or not applied correctly. These two pictures are of traffic on Yarrow Street on an event day before the additional traffic generated from the proposed Cairo building. The zoning code designation MCU is the core issue. This zoning is meant for urban centers like downtown areas or near light rail, which is not this site. The normal setback requirements don't apply here, but should, and they are a direct result of this inappropriate zoning. A strict residential use also doesn't meet the goals of the mixed-use Corps, which expects commercial uses and serve the broader city. Cairo has confirmed plans to also develop 777 South Wadsworth right across from this property as well, with more residential high-density apartments, but has avoided subdivision review, limiting residents' ability to weigh in. The city has the ability to grant a variance to allow a larger setback on this property, and I respectfully ask that you do so in recognition of this property's unique relationship with the park. Adding high-density housing with no setbacks to the park would significantly alter the character of the neighborhood and the tranquility of the park. Increased population density in this ecologically sensitive area could worsen existing issues like off-leash dogs and disregard for other park rules like not fishing. Park rules are already frequently disregarded, and placing more residents in such close proximity to this park will likely lead to increased daily use and greater strain on the ecosystem. As human presence grows, so does the potential for human-wildlife conflicts in this sensitive area. The proposed scale of this new building is out of place, as buildings along the park's edge are currently no taller than two stories. The ultimate question here is how drastically and permanently will Belmar Park be changed if this development is allowed to go forward as proposed. The zoning code requires that the needs of pedestrians who travel near the development be considered. The wall effect, mentioned in a previous slide, will create a hostile pedestrian experience in park users walking through that portion of the park. It will feel like they're intruding on private land, discouraging public park use. The massive big-box building will also block sunlight and cast a shadow over Coons Lake, the pavilions and the historic Bonfide Mansion relics that are right to the eastern edge of the park. An extreme... An immediate casualty of Cairo's proposed master site plan will be the existing trees. In any other context, clearcutting trees is an extreme act. Some of these trees on the property date back to the early 20th century and are homes to birds, insects, and other wildlife. There should have been a more serious effort for the city planners and architectural designers to preserve these trees. It's important to preserve these mature trees to maintain the balance and the historical character of this area. These trees are also part of the tree canopy that Lakewood says it values, that other city plans, such as the comprehensive plan and the parks plan, also say they value. We all know that it will be decades before any new two-inch Fienlu tree planted to replace these mature trees will come close to the size, beauty, and ecological value of the trees already there. They should not be a disposable afterthought. They have been part of the community a lot longer than most of us have been here. This last slide is a story of a single tree saved in London, and it serves as a powerful reminder that clearcutting is not the only option, it is simply a choice. In the case of Belmar Park property, this story highlights how cities can thoughtfully balance development and nature preservation. Achieving this requires intention, effort, and respect not only for the developers' goals, but also for the long-term consequences for both human interests and those without a voice, like the trees and wildlife that will be affected. We don't have to automatically prioritize profit at the expense of clean air, natural spaces, and mature trees. Instead, we must evaluate... Carefully evaluate how existing ordinances may actually contradict the proposed development and use that as a guide for more balanced decision-making. Thank you.
All right. And are there any questions from the Commission for Ms. Hopkins? All right, Ms. Hopkins, I'm seeing no questions from the Commission for you, so thank you very much for your presentation and for your time. Next person... Are you the next person? Are you dedicating time, too, as well, ma'am?
Yes.
All right. And what's your name?
I, Williams.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Williams. And will the folks who are dedicating their time to Ms. Williams, please raise their hands? I see one, two people? I see... I see four. And you only need three, so that's fine.
I only need two.
That's fine. Okay. So, with two, that will be a nine-minute time limit.
Correct.
All right.
Can you hear me okay?
We certainly can. Ms. Williams, begin when you're ready.
Before I begin, in order not to disrupt this meeting, I ask the members of the Planning Commission if it is okay if my fellow attendees raise their hands if they agree with any of my statements.
That's fine for people to raise their hands.
Okay.
I do ask everyone to refrain from any audible signals or anything while someone's speaking.
My fellow attendees, if you agree with any of my following statements, I ask you to simply raise your hand. I am not okay with how the city has dealt with this development. I believe the city has given more importance to the developer than to its people. My trust in our city leaders is diminished because of their handling of this project. Thank you. Members of the Planning Commission, I have said many times that growth is inevitable, but that it must be done responsibly. I believe this development is not being handled responsibly, and that it fails to meet the criteria of the following codes. Under Article 17.3.1.1 and Article 17.3.4.1, purpose and intent, A, ensure compatibility of land uses, and C, maintain the integrity and viability of the adjacent residential neighborhoods. The definition of land use compatibility is the degree to which different land uses can coexist without causing significant negative impacts on each other or surrounding environment. Allowing this development to be within feet of Belmar Park is not compatible. As much as the developer hopes that you will... As much as the developer hopes that you will ignore the incongruity, nothing can minimize its size or the negative impact this six-story building will have in its proximity to the park. The closest residents to this development are the trees, birds, and wildlife in the park. Their viability, their ability to survive, will be threatened. These are the lives that will be most impacted, and they are important. They are what gives Belmar Park its essence and beauty. Belmar Park has unique natural features that will be disrupted and destroyed by this development. Bird migrations will be disrupted, and the lives of 66 witness trees, those that have seen generations of humans, will be sacrificed. There's a public trust in parks as places for recreation and enjoyment. This development will undermine this trust by prioritizing private gain over public benefit. The whole atmosphere of Belmar Park will be changed. I live in Belmar Commons within feet of this development, and we are the people who will be most affected. This development will alter the visual appeal and aesthetic character of our neighborhood and will be inconsistent with the existing style. It is erecting a building that is similar to a hospital in a residential-style neighborhood. In fact, Ortho Colorado Hospital is listed as being 150,000 square feet, whereas this building is listed as almost 129,000 square feet. The overwhelming size is the crux of this issue. Along with this is the increased traffic and noise that will negatively impact the quality of life for many of us. It will be a stress that impacts our health and that we will have to deal with on a daily basis. In my post on Lakewood Speaks, I have attached three articles regarding the mental and physical health impacts of noise pollution on humans and wildlife. Traffic safety is another concern that is justified. Recently, one of our residents had an accident on Yarrow Street that totaled her car, and I have had several close calls crossing Yarrow Street in my wheelchair. It is dangerous now. How much worse will it be with hundreds more cars? How many more accidents or deaths will it take for you to realize that our concerns are justified? Article 17.4.1.3, determination of use. The comprehensive plan states, quote, "The site plan review process and design guidelines ensure that new multifamily developments adjacent to single-family neighborhoods are compatible by incorporating appropriate design, scale, height transition, and connectivity to seamlessly integrate with the neighborhood." All of the adjacent buildings in the surrounded area are one- or two-story, and this is a six-story building. I would compare this to putting a six-foot adult in a room full of two-foot toddlers. It's that simple. There is no seamless integration with regards to scale and height transition. Again, the overwhelming size is the crux of this issue. Article 17.13.1.1, purpose and intent. The article establishes standards for sustainable development in the city of Lakewood and talks about minimizing the impact on limited resources and becoming a positive asset within the community. Are these just words? How can extensive tree removal and consequent habitat removal justify sustainability standards? One of our most limited resources are trees. It is not just the quantity we should be mindful of, but the quality. Mature trees cannot adequately be replaced by saplings. Mature trees are not an expendable resource. As stated in the site plan, 66 trees will be removed, equivalent to 1,213 caliper inches, and replaced with 522 caliper inches. That's less than half. Although the developer has agreed to pay a fee to make up for the lost caliper inches, unless these trees are designated for Belmar Park, this is a lost asset for our community. The code speaks of development becoming a positive asset within the community, but I would ask if this will be a positive asset to the wildlife community? No. Development projects can release pollutants into the air, soil, and water, harming wildlife through direct exposure or through poisoning. Construction with its noise pollution disrupts wildlife communication, excuse me, disrupts wildlife communication, breeding, and foraging behaviors. For these reasons, this major site plan should be denied. One reason zoning codes were created was to protect environmentally sensitive areas. And while our predecessors failed to have the foresight to protect our Belmar Park from a development such as this, I believe we have the ethical and moral duty to do so. Planning commissioners, you have the ability to ensure that if this development proceeds, that it is done responsibly. You can create a balance between the environment and development. I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I am going to ask those in attendance here tonight to respect the council decorum. Typically, in these chambers, we refrain from audible support or discord with the speakers. If you appreciate what someone's saying, raise your hand, thumbs up, wave your hands. Those are great. We're going to try to avoid the audible support or discord throughout the rest of the evening, however. Thank you very much. Who else has signed up to pool time with others? See, there's a gentleman in a blue shirt back here in the back row. What's your name, come forward?
Mr. Durth.
Okay, Mr. Durth, I see you have signed up on the list. Who has donated their time to Mr. Durth?
Me.
Okay, I see, I see three people. Thank you all. Mr. Durth, before you begin.
Yes, sir.
This is, this is a little awkward, but it is the right thing to do. One of my fellow planning commissioners brought to my attention while Ms. Williams was speaking that we forgot to do a swearing-in at the beginning of this hearing. According to the bylaws of the planning commission at a quasi-judicial hearing such as this, everyone who speaks must swear or affirm that they will tell the truth. Ms. Stanek, this might be a legal question for you. Can we retrospectively ask people who've already spoken to swear or affirm that they have told the truth?
Yeah, if you want to swear in anyone who's giving testimony tonight altogether, then the clerk to the commission can do that right now.
Okay. So apologies to everyone for the awkwardness, this is on me for forgetting to do it at the outset. Mr. Clerk, could you swear or affirm? I ask everyone to rise who plans to speak tonight in any capacity, and the clerk will swear you into swear or affirm that you plan to tell the truth or that you have done so if you've already spoken.
Thank you, Chair. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I appreciate everyone bearing with me through that. It is important to observe all the proper procedures in our bylaws, so, thank you. With that, Mr. Durth, please begin.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tom Durth, I'm from Ward Three, and I have lived in Belmar Commons for 21 years on Yarrow Street. I know Yarrow Street, and I want you to understand what Yarrow Street is and what impact that this particular building could have on that street. Yarrow Street serves, it has, it's three blocks long, that's it, three solid blocks. It has three blind curves on that road. There are no side streets. That's really important to remember for the rest of my talk. There are no side streets on Yarrow Street. There are five major driveways that empty onto Yarrow Street, from the library, from the restaurant, there's our own community, a couple more along the way. There is only one entrance on the north side of the street, and that's on Virginia Street. There's only one entrance and exit for to Yarrow Street at the south end, and that's on Virginia Street. This is an aerial view, and I hope you can see it, right in the very center, and it doesn't show up as well here as it does on my computer, but right in the center there, you can see just east of the lake there. It's actually in purple, but you can't see it so much, but that's Yarrow Street that comes down and curves around a little bit there. So you get an idea of where it is. To the north is a shopping center, to the south is other community, to the east is Wadsworth Street, and to the west is the park itself. It serves Belmar Park, Belmar Commons, Belmar Library, Panda Express, and miscellaneous other shops in that particular shopping center. It also serves on the south side, the Heritage Center and Event Center, where they hold many events all year long. And in addition to that, there are office buildings at the end of that block too. So it's a pretty busy street for three blocks of curved street with no exits other than the north and south. Special events happen in the spring, summer, and fall, and it creates traffic jams and parking nightmares. They have to shuttle people in and out of there because there's no parking available to them, and it creates potential concerns for first responders. This is very important because at the last festival they had in October, which was Ciderfest, out in front of my house on Yarrow Street, there was a truck going south and a fire engine going north. That's what the street looks like. That is a reality during an event. Now, it's not like that every day, but during an event, that's what it's like. But I want to point out what it looks like when that street is crowded. That fire truck had to go very slowly by to make past that truck. It was not in an emergency run, but it was there for the event. There are special spring, summer, and fall events there, but the thing that's interesting about that is the events have event staff to direct traffic and pedestrians. There are police on site, there are first responders ready to help, and because of the traffic jams, there are shuttle buses that take people to and from parking sites at least a half a mile away. There are specials, the special events have all that, but we won't have any of that when the event is ended. But we will still have traffic jams and a pain of finding parking. That is a reality. The impact of 411, somehow someone put 414 on my slide, I don't know how that happened, the 411 units, times a rough estimate of around 1.68 cars per unit, times three trips a day, is really close to about 2,050 trips a day. But I know some people work out of their homes, so there probably wouldn't be that many people traveling. But 1,500 trips on Yarrow Street, three blocks with curves in it and a lot of parking, that can be extremely dangerous. There's going to be an increase in visitors. Where do our visitors go? I have company that comes to visit me from Chicago. Where do they park their car if they're going to stay for a few days? Where do people come for birthday parties and graduation parties, that sort of thing? Where will they park? And now you take 411 units, those people are going to have company too. Yarrow's three blocks with no side streets. Where are they going to park? The reality check is that it's going to delay first responders. That is really scary. Want to create a major delays in Virginia and Ohio streets, put a lot of new cars out there. Virginia Street, if you've ever come from the south on Virginia Street and approach Ohio Street, you know it's an uphill, you cannot see oncoming traffic, it's a very slow light, it's very busy, and you think that's busy, go up to Virginia Street, and Virginia Street has all those intersections with shopping centers on both sides of the street and a lot of traffic going on all the time. Add hundreds and hundreds of new cars to that mix, and we're in trouble. There's only approximately 45 parking spots, legal parking spots, on Yarrow. The reason I say legal is because a lot of people park next to fire hydrants and driveways and that sort of thing, but there's really only about 45 legal parking spots right now. The apartment residents will covet those spots, because if they have to pay for indoor parking, they're going to say, why would we pay for indoor parking? There's Yarrow Street. That's a problem. Service trucks won't be able to get to your home, you have to have your refrigerator fixed, you have to have a washer or dryer installed, or whatever it is. Those service trucks won't be able to get anywhere near those homes, especially in Belmar Commons. Belmar Commons and apartment guests will have visitors. Sorry, nowhere to park, nowhere to park. Let's get a visual picture of what that looks like. Remember I showed you on there, just east of the park, east of the lake there is where Belmar is, and down around where there's a dark cluster of the lake, right next to that is where the proposed building is going to go. If there is no parking there, let me show you where we will have to go to look for parking. To the north, shopping center, to the east, Wadsworth, to the south, more residential areas, to the west, the park, and if you want us to park on the other side of the park, we're going to have to walk through that park in the dark. We are now talking about putting the residents of this neighborhood in danger. Why would anybody want to put up an apartment building where there's no place for their own guests, relatives, friends, service people to park? There is no help there. This sets up for another Applewood Bruchi crisis. Now, this forces local residents to park illegally, and this creates unnecessary stress and safety issues for local residents. Now, at a previous planning meeting, there was a visual aid shown where people were talking about parking, and they promised that this is a thing that the city of Lakewood wants to promote for their people. In this visual, whether you can, I don't know if you can read this or not, but it says, want to provide equitable access to parking. It says, we want to reduce trolling for parking. Well, you can drive up and down that three blocks forever, and you're not going to find a parking place once that building's in. Want to be able to have reasonable distance from your home. Once again, I don't want to have to drive three and a half blocks or three and a half a mile, and I don't want to have guests come, and I have to go pick them up or ask them to Uber the rest of my house. And so they promised all these things. They said promote parking space turnover, and to conduct, look at the title of this, is to encourage efficient use of existing parking. We're not talking about putting up a new parking lot between the library and this building, that's just paving over more parking space, more park space. Traffic study, there was a traffic study done in June of '21, that was at the height of the pandemic. The city told us that they will not do another traffic study until the building is built, just think about that. Let's wait till the billings up and find out if the traffic is jammed up or not. You wouldn't approve a building with expired permits, why would you approve a building with expired data? Article 4, 17, 413 states, "The director shall consider, among other irrelevant factors, traffic generation..." traffic generation, density, population, and hours of operation." The hours of operations, 24 hours. The density of population is what we just talked about, that building plus Belmar Commons, and the traffic generation is lots of new cars on that three-block street with no side streets. So I strongly recommend that an updated traffic study be done, there be adherence to the article 417413, and preserve the, have the preservation of Belmar Park. Lakewood shouldn't wait for a target day of gridlock. Let's plan with foresight, not with regret. I thank you for your time and attention to this concern. I certainly hope this helps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durth. Any questions for him from the commission? I'm seeing none. Just remember to stay happy with our hands to show approval. Thank you very much. Does anyone else sign up to speak who is pooling time? I see a woman in the back here raising her hand. Please state your name, ma'am, and with people who have donated time, identify yourselves. I see one, two. Thank you. That's Ms. Greenman, correct? All right. Could you speak at the microphone, please? Thank you. And begin with your name.
Hi, my name is Celia Greenman. I'm in Ward Two. I'm going to speak to a letter written by Dr. David Langseth. He is, let's see here. He is, has an MS and PhD from MIT, where he's a professor, and he's worked for over 40 years in water resources and environmental quality management. You can read that letter that I just gave you, but it's also posted on Lakewood Speaks. He says, "For the project, onsite stormwater is designed to be captured and stored in an underground vault and then discharged in a pipe at the outfall from Coonsey Lake, leading to Weir Gulch. The final drainage report for the project states that the system will comply with Lakewood's Storm Drainage Criteria Manual. My own comment on this is that the manual was published in 1982 and has not been updated." Again, from Dr. Langseth. "The system as designed does not address the less quantitative criteria found in the Lakewood zoning rules or the Urban Storm Drainage Criteria Manual, specifically the Lakewood Zoning Section 17.7.5, Open Space and On-Site Amenities. In Point One of that article, General Standards Part C states the following: Stormwater detention areas should be integrated into the site design and used as an amenity to the greatest extent possible. This zoning rule reflects the concept that stormwater can and should be used beneficially as an amenity. In addition, the Mile High Flood District Urban Storm Drainage Manual states in Volume One, Section 1.1, 'An urban storm drainage strategy should be a multi-objective and multi-means effort. The many competing demands placed on space and resources within an urban region argue for a drainage management strategy that meets a number of objectives, including water quality enhancement, groundwater recharge, recreation, wildlife habitat, and wetland recreation. In essence, this statement is promoting beneficial use of stormwater, not just control of off-site impacts. Thus, both the Lakewood zoning rules and the Mile High Flood Control Guidance endorse beneficial stormwater use beyond the basic requirements of, to control off-property impacts. The proposed project does not make any apparent attempt to use stormwater beneficially, but rather simply mitigates off-property impacts, a minimal approach to managing stormwater. The proposed project collects the stormwater in an underground vault, and the reasons for using this approach are apparent from the character of the proposal. Putting the stormwater detention into an underground vault allows the area over the vault to be developed, increasing the site development density. It would be quite feasible to use stormwater as an onsite amenity if the development density for the property were reduced. The applicant could be challenged to think of ways to make beneficial use of stormwater and incorporate them into the project proposal. Neither the extreme intensity nor the proximity to the public water amenity created by Coonsey Lake should be used as a reason to avoid using stormwater beneficially in some fashion. An obvious potential option would be to route the detention vault outflow through Coonsey Lake, recharging groundwater and landscape watering. And from my own observation, if you have walked around the lake in the last year, you know that the lake level is down. Park managers are trying to balance the needs of irrigation with those of the environment. Removing that runoff to Coonsey Lake will further diminish the lake level and the water quality. In addition, trees fronting the lake, those that remain, will not receive water or water from groundwater recharge." Then back to Dr. Langseth. "The proposed project is a large, intense development in a sensitive area adjacent to the public amenities of Belmar Park and Coonsey Lake. In essence, the developer is capturing some of the public value of the park. That is, the development is more valuable due to the presence of the park, but is not doing anything to contribute to the value of the park. In fact, the development not only does not contribute, it detracts. It will be a long time, probably 50 years or more, before this site is again subject to redevelopment. If redevelopment of this site is allowed to proceed, now is the time to incorporate modern concepts of beneficial stormwater use, rather than settling for just mitigating off-property impacts." Then I have further comments. "The Municipal Code, Section 14.16.4, Parkland Dedication is not within the zoning code, but based on that calculation, the developer owes the city about 3.3 acres of parkland. However, the city opted to accept an in lieu of offer from the developer. I know from conversation with the previous project planner that some staff considered a complete lack of buffer with the park as unacceptable, and I do not understand why the city does not push back against such a design which abuts a walkway at the lotline and surrounding the lake. It's a sensitive area. Instead of being subjected to months of packed meetings with unhappy residents and suffering bad press about how the city operates, why has the city yielded to the developer and no one else? At the Planning Commission meeting on February 21, 2024, Planning Director Travis Parker testified that in 12 years, he had made decisions on projects unilaterally without public input or referring a project to the Planning Commission. He had also never required parkland dedication for a project. His reasoning was that all sites were the same, and he did not want to be seen giving preferential treatment to any one developer. Therefore, a 411-unit apartment complex adjacent to the crown jewel of Lakewood's park system would get the same review as the Lofts, Trifecta, or Cityscape in Belmar Shopping Center. The developers are treated deferentially by the planning staff, but not the sites themselves. Opponents of the projects have heard from one city councillor that the project could not be denied because then the city would be sued by the developer, and as she is charged with fiscal responsibility, she could not allow that to happen. Well, city has already been sued by the developer and incurred the cost of litigation. Whatever decision is made tonight, the city will be sued again. Why not, for a change, be on the right side of history and negotiate with the developer for a smaller, less intrusive project that respects the integrity of the park? There are no real guidelines for Planning Commission review of major site plans, but for other decisions, you can accept, or reject, or modify. I ask that this project be modified to better blend in with the park and surrounding neighborhoods. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Greenman. Thank you, everyone, for your support for her words. Has anyone else signed up to speak? Pooling time. Am I missing anyone? All right, I don't think I am. So in that case, we will move on. I will start going through the list in order from here on out. Every speaker will have three minutes to speak. So we'll start with Carol McCoy. And after Ms. McCoy will be, it looks like Marsha Cohen and Pat Mellon. You'll be next. Ms. McCoy, when you are ready, please begin.
Hi there, I'm Carol McCoy, and I live in Ward Four. I submitted comments today on Lakewood Speaks earlier today. Those comments focus on the many waivers and accommodations that have been preliminarily approved and reflected in the master plan before you. As I step back, and I hope as you step back, isn't it strange that the proposed development next to Belmar Park does not contain a single substantive mitigation measure to protect the park, to protect the wildlife, and to protect the visitor amenities of the park? There are no setbacks, no requirements for special glass to cut back on the glare and bird strikes that we heard about earlier tonight, or no height restrictions. Isn't this just weird, given the unique location? Why not? Why no mitigation? Really? Wouldn't a developer expect to be required to include mitigation that accounted for such a unique location as being immediately next to Belmar Park? I would think Kyroy did initially think it would be required to include mitigation, but thought, let's ask for waivers and see what happens. We know the answer to that. Just look at the numerous waivers and accommodations contained in this proposal. The city today has accommodated nearly every, maybe all, requests of the developer. Also think about why the master site plan is before you tonight. It isn't because the head of the planning department had a change of heart or concern over transparency. It is because people in Lakewood treasure Belmar Park and spoke up and continue to speak up and pressed on this issue. They are still speaking up and hoping. What will you do? Be a rubber stamp like the others? The mayor, the city council, city staff? They all could have changed the trajectory of this development to have Kyroy put forth a building more in keeping with its unique setting next to Belmar Park, but chose to look the other way. You've heard a number of great suggestions tonight from citizens and experts. The pressure on you is high. The decision may already be a foregone conclusion. I hope that is not the case. I hope you step back and think of the future of Lakewood and what makes it special. A residential building can be built here, but I hope you choose one different than the one that has been presented to you for approval via the master plan. Reject the master plan and send Kyroy back to the drawing board to design a building that fits this location. The company has resources and talent, we heard about that tonight. Have the company put them to use for the benefit of prospective residents of such a building and the many users of the park today and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. And next up will be Marsha Cohen, and then Pat Mellon, and then Ira Boleen after that. Welcome, Ms. Cohen.
Hello, I'm Marsha Cohen, and I live in Ward Four. Nice to see many of you again. I've been to many of these meetings, and also to the city council meetings, and I've heard a lot of input. Now, in the beginning, we were not asked for input, but we were very thankful that the city council and Planning Commission did put together a plan to allow for public input. What I've heard in that input is that there's a great need for affordable housing. We know, I know that property, I worked in that property. I worked in it in 2012, when the zoning was changed, and at that time, the building was fully occupied, it was a very functional building, and when zoning was changed, it wasn't a thought about, oh, this might be demolished and something else put in its place. So while we could have spoken out at that time and said we would like different zoning here for a building that's right next to the park, that was not a consideration when, at that time, the building was functional. But I've heard a lot about the need for affordable housing. I've heard a lot about need for accessibility. I've heard a lot about parking. I've heard a lot about traffic, and a whole lot about the environmental concerns for the park itself, both from the lack of setback, the height of the building, and the windows, the general construction of the building. And what I have not heard in any of these meetings is a real desire to have more luxury apartment buildings in that area. I think that it is a good, it is probably a good design. I think that, you know, they've got certainly a great history, but I think it is the wrong design for this piece of property, and it's a wrong design for the citizens who've all come out time and time again to ask for these considerations. So I'd like you to take that into consideration as you decide whether to move forward with the existing plan or ask for a modified plan. And what we would like to see is something, setback from the park, something that protects and mitigates any impacts to the park, and have it be no more than two to three stories tall, so it won't shadow the park. The other thing I'd like to just bring to your attention, which you may already know, probably know, but that in the demolition of that property, the proper permits were not obtained. So our developer did go ahead and start that demolition without the proper grading permits and mitigation for all of that runoff and such to go into the lake, which is right next to the building.
All right. And Ms. Cohen, your time has expired.
So I think we need to take that into consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Pat Mellon is next, and then Ira Boleen. Ms. Mellon, welcome back to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Nice to see you all. My name is Pat Mellon. I am an attorney, and I represent Save Belmar Park, Inc. And in reading through all of the postings on Lakewood Speaks, I'd like to respectfully suggest that framing this major site plan decision as one solely about housing or not more housing is oversimplifying this decision. Maximizing one goal, like housing, is easy. Maximizing multiple goals at the same time, like more housing that complements existing neighborhoods, consistent with the comprehensive plan and Parks Master Plan, is challenging. I don't envy you this role. It typically requires some compromise. I think that we can agree that more housing, no matter what, or no matter where it is, is not okay. The goals of providing more housing and doing it in a manner that is consistent with the vision of what the city of Lakewood means and what it intends to become are not mutually exclusive. Lakewood has done so much work to prepare and maintain its comprehensive plan and its arts, parks, and recreation plan. These documents that the current property owners, people already here in Lakewood These documents that the current property owners, people already here in Lakewood, have a right to rely on and have relied on to choose to buy here and to protect their property rights and values. Each new development, each of these decisions, is going to change Lakewood, small or large. The question is, how will it change Lakewood? And is it doing it in a manner consistent with the other planning documents that the zoning code requires be considered? I want to remind everybody that Lakewood is Lakewood. It's a brand. It's an idea. Lakewood is different than Golden. It's different than Brighton. It's different than Parker. It's different than Highland Ranch. And the decisions and the guidance that's been given based on tons of resident input is captured in the other planning documents, but these decisions right here are what make those plans live or just be words on paper. Each of these decisions either is consistent with what we think Lakewood is going to be in 10 years, or they're not, and it's going to be something else entirely. So, my constituents, my clients, have tried very hard to bring forth the ways and the tools this group has to use to make sure that this decision is consistent with a comprehensive plan and the plans for the parks, and that it is not just an island onto itself and a decision that disrespects everything around it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mellon. And you have a question from Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Ms. Mellon. I'm sure, as an attorney, then you can appreciate that today, the planning commission is not being asked to decide what the best use of this property is. Today, we're being asked to apply the law to the facts, and right now, I am curious to hear from you, which laws, which zoning ordinances are being violated by this proposed site?
Well, I would direct you to Regina Hopkins' PowerPoint that I helped, that I was part of creating. The idea that it is strictly about the zoning code ignores the fact that the zoning code also requires that the other ordinances be respected. And I'm going to say, I'm not going to remember the exact code, but if you look at her PowerPoint presentation, it's on Lakewood Speaks. It talks about connectivity. It talks about height transitions. It talks about the qualitative things that the staff reports don't talk about. The staff report you heard today was all about the very specific numerical quantitative evaluation criteria that are pretty much a yes or no. What you didn't hear the staff talk about was how it fits within the neighborhood, which is also a valid requirement in the zoning ordinances. And the place, in terms of the exact ordinance numbers, please see Regina Hopkins and her PowerPoint.
So, in that PowerPoint, there are citations to the zones that are being violated?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Mellon, I have a further question on that. I noted in that PowerPoint, but I thought I'd save the question for later, but I think you're maybe the perfect person to ask this. One of her citations was to Section 17.4.1.3, which is entitled Determination of Use. And the citation on that slide was that the director shall consider, among other relevant factors, characteristics of the zone, categories that permit a similar use, traffic generation, density of population, and so forth. I did want to note that the preceding section directly before that says that those factors that the director considers, well, it says clearly in the code book right here, that the director considers them when any use that is not clearly identified in the use table shall be assigned an existing use category that is in that table in accordance with those principles, right? So, since it was cited in that presentation that you said you prepared...
I didn't prepare it. I participated.
Okay. You participated. Do you believe that the land use in this major site plan application is a land use that is not cited in the land use table in Article Four?
So, I would say it is a land use that is cited in Table Four. I would tell you that I was curious to hear the staff talk about the land, the mixed-use core zoning as being sort of like taken as its whole, not just site by site. And that's the first time I've actually heard that particular approach in the staff reviews. Typically, what I've experienced is that the staff reviews each parcel as an island unto itself. But in this case, it is a solely residential use in a mixed-use parcel, mixed-use zone parcel. So, I think there's an opportunity to consider it not exactly standard, but you're right, it does exist as a use in that table.
Okay. Right. I just wanted to make the point that those particular criteria that were cited, in my view, are not applicable because the use is multifamily housing, which is one that exists in that table. As to your point about the mixing of uses in any of our mixed-zone districts, you know, I had thought that you would come to many planning commission meetings before, and I've seen your face a lot, and I'm sure I have, but I might suggest you come to a few more. Except for the, every meeting where we've considered any case in a mixed-use zone, that I've been on this commission for over three years, we have definitely stated, staff and/or commissioners, that the mixed-use zones apply as an area, and you do not have to have a mix of uses in Lakewood in a mixed-use zone district. The mixed-use zones means that you may mix uses. You may have residential, you may have commercial, you may have both, but you don't have to. That is the intent and the way that the code is written, on a particular parcel. But by allowing that flexibility in a general area, over time, you do see a mix of uses arise. That's the intent, as I've always understood it. I don't know. I guess you said something to the contrary, but, you know, does that interpretation strike you as one that's inherently unreasonable?
No, it doesn't. It's just not been my experience. I've not actually been to many planning commission meetings, other than related to the Whipperwell site, but I have been to many city council sessions regarding this site and Whipperwell. So, I will certainly listen more carefully.
Okay. No worries.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Mellon? Commissioner O'Neill, did you light it on from earlier, or did you light it up?
Oh, sorry.
I think there's no more questions.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Ira Beline is next on the list. And then after that will be Margarita Zirinova. Welcome. You may begin when ready.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for the hearing, and I appreciate that the applicant is here and listening. My name is Ira Beline. I live in Inglewood, but I have come to Belmar many times to breathe and to photograph nature. I'm a retired architect and planner, and I have experience working on buildings with programs like this for commercial and residential developers. It seems like this horse is already out of the barn. I've never seen a complete development of building and engineering plans like this one has without a site plan approval. So, it's a question for me. But the basic problem here, obviously, is it's the zoning. You know, the zoning is at fault here. How did that happen? You and your staff know that this is a terrible location for a building like this. The zoning of this parcel on the, sticks out on the map like a sore thumb into a valuable open space, and this building makes things worse. It's going to be like that hammered thumbnail, black and blue. Your staff compares this building to Trifecta Belmar. That's okay, except that that building is in the middle of town with other buildings like it, part of a city block, not next to a natural open space and townhomes. So, what will look Lakewood and your visitors have to live with should this go through? The open space will suffer, obviously, terribly for reasons you've heard. How many dogs will be there in this building? And how many will be walked there every day by owners who don't pick up after them? Now, that's not just a, it's not just something to consider for your nose, but that crap will smell up your boots, ruin your walk, and damage the environment, and damage the water quality. Your visitors will see that. And how many dogs will not be kept on a leash and left to chase the wildlife and bother the horses that ride through there? I suspect that the next parcel for a development like this one, next door, is going to go ahead, and that will mean twice as many dogs. I'm not arguing about the number of people. You know, if the building meets the zoning regulation for that specific site, that's what you're going to get. But I also suspect that the public safety officers will be much busier in that park after this. Finally, this building will be difficult to look at. It will not grace Lakewood. It has not been designed as much as it has been simply engineered to meet the developer's requirements and the limits and the regulations of this zoning.
I'm sorry, your time has expired, Mr. Beline. Please succinctly conclude. All right. Thank you. Margarita Zirinova, and after Ms. Zirinova will be Christine Geisbuehler. Ms. Zirinova, begin.
I'm a scientist by trade, and here I'm a resident of Lakewood. From ancient times, the effect of people gatherings on well-being of the community have been well-studied, well-documented in psychology, and statistically documented that this all improves people kindness towards each other. In our case, Belmar Park is such an island of peace, more like a button that holding Lakewood together, like a temple on the sky where the God creations can coexist in peace, as enjoying nature or park activities like concerts and earth insider days. I walk my family and dogs in the park. I had horseback rides from animals living in Belmar neighborhood. There are many photographers, as we just heard, among walking people, many of them out-of-state visitors, creating memories of Lakewood by photographing nature and free skies unobstructed by tall buildings. With higher occupancy buildings in the park, we are destroying park, park activities, celebrations, and nature habitats, as well as nation-known jewel of Lakewood. Destroying Belmar habitat, we take away that safety zone for people that are allowed to regain well-being by their releasing the stress in activities in the park. By destroying habitat, I mean we are all interconnected, nature, people, we are all one ecosystem. Visiting Belmar Park is a pleasure, not just because of nature, but people-friendly attitude. Changing this ecosystem of nature and humanity by bringing obstructive, dynamic infrastructure and lifestyle, we have negative impact on the community well-being, our children, our future voters. Mental health of Lakewood depends on health of future generations as well. Families are national assets. Lakewood is losing many moms and pups, businesses, by pushing out jobs and facilities to obligate developers for years. So, when people would finally give up and move due to unaffordable living, due to prices and emotional distress, who will move into Lakewood? Into Lakewood without always destroyed open space? Definitely reminds me in famous unaffordable, empty megapolicies of China. Is this our future? Is this what America stands for? We are citizens and voters of Lakewood, and personally, 25 years from me, asking you, each of you, councils and our chosen voted voices and commissioners, as you swear in your oath to faithfully protect our well-being and safety by keeping very few safe nature-oriented heaven's temples like Lakewood protected and preserved, please save Belmar Park for nature and people, make Lakewood to stand strong in times of transition crisis. And as one of the speakers says, balanced solution. If necessary, use that space to extend Lakewood Cultural Center for classes that help, and personally, my children in some of these classes, or make a great sore parking lot, so we can complement like Cultural Center and library around the park. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I previously called Christine Geisbuehler, but I announced the form that I think she donated time to one of our earlier speakers.
She didn't sign up for any time. I think she was three minutes.
I'm sorry, what's that?
She signed up for her own. So, she would basically...
All right. All right. I'll allow it. Come on forward.
Thank you for having me here. I'm glad you're all here. I know this is a really tough spot for everybody.
Thank you. And begin with your name, please.
I'm Christine Geisbuehler. And you said that very well. Good job.
Thank you. I tried my best.
My husband comes from a long line of goat hill, goat herders, as Geisbuehler is a goat hill. I am not in favor of this project as planned in the proposed Belmar Park location. Why in the world would the city of Lakewood allow for the placement of such a massive development on the very boundary of one of Lakewood's most treasured parks? This land, Kunzi Lake, and the mansion that sadly was destroyed long ago for commercial profits, was donated by one of Lakewood's biggest benefactors, May Bonville Stanton. Given that she donated it to the Denver Catholic Archdiocese, I'm certain that her intention was to protect the land, its natural treasures and wildlife, and her beloved home that's already been lost. What would it, what more could we do to dishonor the trust she placed in the city through her generous donation? In addition to the adverse impacts this development imposes to the natural environment and its wildlife, the size of the development is grossly out of proportion to any other building in the area. Additionally, it will block treasured views from already existing Belmar residences and businesses. It will greatly exacerbate the already miserable traffic in that area, in addition to increasing the toxicity of the air and the water runoff, again adversely impacting Belmar Park and its wildlife. I also completely disagree with just being able, for developers just to be able to, the whole fee in lieu, you know, buy out of doing something that they should do because money makes no difference to them. Also, open space like Belmar belongs to Lakewood residents, and only the residents should be able to approve a development that is a detriment to open space, that we have voted for and paid for with our taxes. Why can't we move this huge building to one of the very many derelict pieces of property in Lakewood? I've lived here since 1965. I've seen Colfax look miserable and awful for all of my life. It's been calling out, pleading for development for literally decades. Why don't we use that space and bring some life back into it and make that be a new booming area in Lakewood? Why destroy a park in the process? My last note is just that I believe that allowing this development to go forward will set a very destructive precedent for the city. Lakewood prides itself on open space. There will be lots of opportunities for developers, if this one passes, to say, oh, isn't this great? This is great marketing. We can say we built this beautiful park for them. No, the park has already been there, and they're just going to use it as something to market their property on. So, let's not just all of a sudden take all the things that characterized Lakewood as a beautiful city with lots of open space and basically open the door for developers to destroy it. I agree with the others that have said we need development, we need tax revenue, we need better housing, mostly for people that are, we don't need luxury apartments, we need people, we need apartments for the kids who've grown up in Lakewood that are having to stay with their parents because they can't afford to move anywhere else. That's who needs the homes.
And you're at time.
And putting them on Colfax or something like that would be a great idea.
Thank you very much. I have Gail Hamilton signed up next. And Ms. Hamilton, you made a note Heather Johnson video. Do we have some video presentation or some sort that we need to accommodate?
Hi, I'm Gail Hamilton. I live in Ward Three, and I'm going to play a video.
Hi, my name is Heather Johnson.
Hi, my name is Heather Johnson, and I have a master's in geophysical engineering and a background in data analysis. I wanted to briefly show the effects that the proposed new building would have on the park and the surrounding residential area with this model that I helped create. This model shows the building overlaid on the satellite image of the area. The building is 70 feet in this model, which is the estimate of 15 feet for the first story and 11 feet for each of the five other stories above it. This is mostly to show the impact of the shadows on the surrounding area at different times of day and seasons. Right now, birds are nesting in and near the park. If the building was there, this would impact the shading on the lake in the morning when the sun should be shining on the lake. Also note that the 65 mature trees that are used for nesting and nesting material are not here, and instead this gray here is all concrete. And so in the spring, we have really cold nights, cold mornings, and this big shadow will inevitably create longer into the season, having like ice on the pond, on the lake, and that will most definitely affect the wildlife that's, that resides there. So yeah, you can see that the sun rises around 6:30, and you can just see this big looming shadow that's all across the, the lake. And then probably a bigger issue is in the winter. So I'm gonna go now to December and go back to standard time. And so now you can see that the, the sun rises later, and we have this big shadow on the north side of the lake. And all through the day, the whole north side of the building is in the shadows, and then by around 1:30, 1:40, around 2, these, how, these houses, these condos over here in this residential area are starting to get in the shade. And so that's really early in the day for them to be in the shadows, and this is in direct conflict with the current ordinances that are in place. And I think that if the building were not as tall, not as large of a footprint, and was not as invasive to the area, it would be a lot better, because there's gonna be issues with snow removal, with the road right here, and with much of the area being in the shadows, in the winter is gonna be a really big problem. And for our wildlife, it's also a problem. And the last thing I want to show is just the previous footprint of this whole area, and the building was much smaller before, and it's not as invasive, and it's not as big of an issue with our neighborhood. And that's it, and thank you for listening. Thanks.
All right, thank you for playing that. That's, that's your three minutes. I appreciate it, Ms. Hamilton. Oh, and Commissioner O'Neil has a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. The lady that produced that model was talking about the scale that she had produced the model to. Can you explain that? Because it's, it seemed, I didn't understand that, how the scale was created.
As far as the height of the building or the footprint on the site?
The, probably all of it, but the height is what I'm referring to. There, she said something about 11 feet and then something.
Well, that's an estimation. So generally, the first floor is higher, and it might be 15 to 18 feet, and then you've got 10, 11, or 12 feet per floor. After that, you end up with 60 to 75 feet on the building. That side is also 10 feet above the lake, so it's uphill to begin with, so it's gonna tower over the lake and the park property.
So she added elevation to accommodate that extra?
No, she was just talking about the height of the building.
Okay.
And it was between 60 and 70 feet from, on the site.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Next up to speak, we have Nate Whiteman, followed by Susan Brugman, and then William Turner. Mr. Whiteman, welcome.
Hey, thanks. Nate Whiteman, Ward Five. I, I just wanna say I support this project. I support the minor waiver. I feel the waiver will give Lakewood a better-looking building than the building that we saw without the waiver. So also, I, I just wanna note that housing humans is important, and, and we can see the consequences of that in Ward One and Two all the time, and, and, and we can't handle that. But density is important to reduce our carbon footprint. Denver Water says humans living in density use half the water of those who live in sprawl. Okay, so going forward, this is important. Jefferson County Housing Assessment says 86% of Lakewood's workforce has to drive into town to come to work. 86% drives here and drives home out of town, okay, from other cities. The Belmar area is the most wonderful walkable area in Lakewood, and it deserves this density, okay? Walkable communities are healthier, they reduce car usage, they support a great small business environment, and a needed tax base. This density is a win for Lakewood by adding housing, a win for our tax base, a win for our walkable communities, and our local businesses. So thank you all.
All right, any questions? See no questions from Mr. Whiteman. Thank you, sir. All right, Susan Brugman. Is Ms. Brugman here? Perhaps not. And afterwards will be Barbara Millman. Mr. Turner, go ahead.
I'm Bill Turner, and I'm a member of the Board of the Denver Field Ornithologists, as well as a frequent visitor to Belmar Park. And I'd like to thank you and, and for, and the Planning Department for giving us this opportunity to comment on this project. I've had other com, other things have come to me, because much of what I was gonna talk about has already been covered by, so ably by Dr. Pareto, and Sarah, and Celia, and Regina, all the rest. So I think one common thread that you've heard a lot about is the incompatibility of this project, which has been one of the criterias that's been suggested in the zoning code. And I think the flaw for this whole process has been the fact that this has been treated as a part of the Lakewood urban corridor. So it's, and there's been no consideration for the, the unique position that this is in. This has been brought out by other speakers. To me, it's akin to building a six-story building across the street from a large elementary school, and then concentrating on, well, this building meets all these criteria, and so therefore, we have no, no basis for denying it or modifying the project, because, well, it's right across from a, from a, and we're seeing this with drilling in here in Colorado, that drilling outfits are being put close to, close to inappropriate destinations. So I think that's a, that's a major kind of a thing. Then I'm stressed with the inconsistency of what City of Lakewood has, has, has put in some of their documents. For example, in the comprehensive plan, there's a statement that says, let's see, how is it here? Human society depends on the environment first and foremost in order to achieve social and economic sustainability. And again, in the comprehensive plan put out by the city, Lakewood will be a leader in sustainability, sustainability principles, practices, and education. Lakewood is committed to, to the well-being and health of its citizens and environment. The city will, will, will reduce the impact on natural systems. This project as being proposed does not live up to these ideals, much less conform to the spirit and intentions of Lakewood's zoning code and the comprehensive plan, the purpose of which is intended to ensure that these ideals are being met. Also, we've heard from the Planning Department that they've gone to great efforts to make sure that this project got, got publicized, it was, the people knew what it was all about. I'd like to ask everybody here.
Mr. Turner, your time is, um.
Okay. How many people here just heard about the details of this project?
Mr. Turner.
In terms of what's going on beyond the last several months? How many people have really been kept informed? Yep, not as many as I thought. So anyway.
All right, your time is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I hope you'll take into consideration all of the, all of what's being said here. Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Barbara Millman. And Nicolau Balkanski would be after that. Good evening. Begin when you are ready.
Pardon? I didn't hear you.
Oh, Ms. Millman, go ahead and begin when you're ready.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. Three weeks ago, a raccoon gave birth to babies in my chimney. Hearing the kids' noisy pleas for mama's milk has nurtured me during a difficult time in my life. People either make wisecracks or grimace at me when I share that I'm a raccoon midwife. I know I am not typical, but I have much in common with many thousands of people who go to Belmar Park each year and find the same peace and inspiration that I experience with the raccoon kits. They are nurtured in a way that only nature can provide. Parents teach their children an appreciation of wildlife and fauna. Many of us walk our dogs and pick up from our dogs, and join in their spontaneous delight when they see another dog. Others carry cameras with long lenses, confident they will be able to photograph some of the park's 230 bird species, which is quite unusual, that amount. Every year, we are greeted by turtles lined up at siesta time on a low-lining branch at a pond. Families choose the backdrop of a beautiful natural setting in the park for a professional photographer to honor a daughter's quinceañera or a son's high school graduation. This precious park holds wonderful memories that go back to a time when life was uncomplicated and without today's stress. There was no need for codes back then. We respected the environment. Then it became necessary. Wonderful codes were created. Then they were ignored, like they are now, when Lakewood gives the go-ahead to Cairo's mammoth luxury apartment building that will tower over the park. May Bonfield Stanton, the daughter of the founder of the Denver Post, bought and preserved this land, all this land, the land where we are right now. And she preserved part of it for the wildlife and the land, and the lakes. She hired guards to safeguard the wildlife from intruders. She wanted to protect all of it for posterity. I wonder what she would think about our fight to preserve it. She would applaud our current codes and be devastated that the city ignores them. She would testify that if you must have a building, make it more like the surrounding residential buildings. You've heard this tonight a lot.
And your time is now up.
It is.
It is, it is up according to the clock in front of me. Please briefly conclude your remarks.
If you must have a building, she would ask that there be a significant buffer to the park in order for it not to be intrusive to humans, animals, and birds. And lastly, City Planner Mark Smith, who is here tonight, has said Lakewood has acted as if Belmar Park is an amenity to 777 South Yarra Street, and that seems to be the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicolau Balkanski?
Well, I think it's, has been said enough about all this, what's gonna happen to the park, and I contribute, it's getting worse and worse from every, I'm a professional artist, my master signature member of oil paints for America. And I've painted a whole paintings from this park. I moved from Evergreen 35 years ago, right here in this neighborhood. And now it's getting uglier every day. It's a joke, that building. Just forget about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next online is Cheryl Ramirez, and then Kelsey Kresbach. Is Ms. Ramirez here? Yeah, all right.
I just have a quick question. There's 11 signs up here, but there's one, two, three, four, five of you. So where are the rest of the council people that should be here tonight?
This is the same room that City Council meets in. There are 11 members of City Council, and there are five Planning Commissioners present here. Ordinarily, this commission has seven members. At the moment, we have a vacancy and an absence.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, the developer here said that he's been fighting, trying to get this property built for four years now. So that was news to me, because I just heard about this maybe three or four months ago. Now, all of a sudden, it sounds like it's already going through, and the people that live here really didn't have a say. It's like, well, just do it. They're not gonna care. Just build whatever you want. Nobody's gonna come out, nobody's gonna come and see, they're just gonna let it go through. And it seems to me, like listening to this tonight, you all have already decided that this is a done deal, and I think that it can be scaled down. It should not be that big of a development in this area. First Bank over there is five stories. The Hyatt in Lakewood is five stories, and you guys are agreeing to six stories and maybe higher? So it doesn't seem like this was planned out. It doesn't seem like you guys went through any discussions on how this should be proceeding, and I'm very disgusted, very discouraged, and very, I wanted to tell you to your face how sorry I am that you guys have just sold out to all the residents here in Lakewood.
And Ms. O'Neil, Commissioner O'Neil has a question for Speaker.
It's, it's more of a point of order, I think. I know we just got an email about points of order. I'm not sure if I'm using that right, but I just wanted to clarify, this body is hearing about this development for the first time this evening. There have been no decisions made, so I just wanted to clarify that for you, so that there's...
Well, it seems to me like you guys have already kind of made up your mind.
So then I guess I do have a question, and my question would be, why would you say that? I mean, where is that coming from?
From my heart. I don't have anything prepared. I didn't write anything down. I've lived in Lakewood for over 40 years. I've raised my kids here. I just feel like this development is way too big. This park is a diamond in Lakewood, and it's the only big park that's left in Lakewood, pretty much, and you guys are just gonna destroy it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Kelsey Kresbach is the next person signed up. Is Ms. Kresbach in attendance? I'm taking this as a no. And after Ms. DePietro, we will have Caitlin Book. Mr. DePietro, welcome.
Hi, I'm Mary DePietro, and I live in Belmar Gardens, which is the neighborhood to the west of Belmar Park, and I enjoy a Belmar Park on a daily basis. What's stunning to me, besides everything that most people are talking about, the size, the lack of setback, the disregard for the jewel that Belmar Park is with this development, is when the developer was speaking, he talked about providing a great development for his residents, and his development and his perspective doesn't seem to take into consideration... And his development and his perspective doesn't seem to take into consideration any of the residents that already live in this area. So being so concerned about his residents and disregarding the residents that already live here was pretty insulting to me as a resident, as a concerned citizen about Belmar Park. That's great that your residents will benefit so much from a beautiful luxury, high-end apartment building, but the rest of the regular people who live close to the park, who have lived here and put their hearts and souls into this community, feel really disregarded. So I'm against this development. I know legally it met criteria, but it just doesn't make sense in relation to what's already here. Thank you.
Caitlin Book?
Bach.
Bach. My apologies. Yep.
There could be someone else.
Oh, see, it's kind of the same-looking letter. It's okay.
Yeah, sorry, I have engineering writing.
Me, too.
My name's Caitlin Bach. I'm a Ward 1 resident, and as I describe myself to my friends, a very typical millennial. We have a rescue dog who we love to walk in Belmar Park. I loved to go out to brunch with my friends to get avocado toast, and it was very, very hard to buy a house and to find housing when I moved here about three years ago. I say that as an engineer who is not even low-income. I am not a service worker. I am not a teacher. I'm not a low-paid nurse. And those are the people who indirectly benefit the most from this development. Finding a house two years, or three years ago, two years ago, now in Lakewood was incredibly hard, and we did not have a long list of requirements. A walkable neighborhood, restaurants and shops nearby, and a place to walk before mentioned dog. This development and other developments in Belmar, such as these, would meet these requirements and then some. This is what millennials and Gen Z and future generations want. And quite frankly, I have to be at work at 6:00 a.m. A lot of my other friends do. We don't get the luxury of sleeping in and being here until, I think it's like 10 o'clock now. So with that said, I'm very much in favor of this. I very much wanted to be here to speak for those people who could not speak, who could not miss work at 6:00 in the morning, who could maybe show up a little bit later, like I can, and say, please continue to develop Lakewood. Please continue to let it be a place where I can live, where my friends can live, where my children, if I ever have them, can live. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question from Commissioner Williams for you, Ms. Bach.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bach. I just wanted to say, as a fellow millennial on this planning commission, thank you for taking your time tonight to do this. I can't speak for the rest of the commission here, but I also have a, you know, full-time job and have to go in the morning. And so I just, you know, really value the input of the younger millennial and Gen Z residents in this community. I really appreciate that. I recognize that we're here tonight to look at a very specific piece of the zoning code in relation to this development, but I just wanted to say I really appreciate your comments as a younger person in our community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Linda Shop.
Stop.
Stop. And after Ms. Stop will be Gary Ray and Carl Mann. Ms. Stop, my apologies for mispronouncing your name. Proceed when you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight. You all here on this planning commission have a very big decision to make. And I know that you have been involved in our city all these last few years, where many, many of us that live here, and I live in Ward 4, I've been here for 25 years, we have been trying to stop this development before it got to this place right now, where you're going to just look at the quantitative, nonqualitative facts about this development to see if it meets the codes as was described to you by the planning department. And we have heard about the qualitative pieces, how important this park is, where this is not, the development is not adjacent to. It is the park. This piece of land is the park. It was unfortunately sold a long time ago, when it could have been bought by the city of Lakewood, which did not happen. This was at least 30 years ago. They've had other opportunities. The city has had other opportunities to purchase this land. It did not, much to sadness, I mean, absolute abomination that this was not done before. So here we've gone. We've had a petition out. 8,000 residents signed a petition saying, "We want open space." This is related to open space. It's related to the preservation of our environment, which millennials are very, very concerned about, our environment. This is about protecting the jewel of Belmar Park and not allowing developers to take whatever they want here and using that park as an amenity, which is what we've been speaking about as well. We need to make sure that this plan is stopped right here tonight. Do not allow this development to happen, even if it meets all these codes, because we've already seen that some of the codes weren't actually looked at the right way, that it was twisted, manipulated, or ignored, that certain codes. And I served on the advisory committee to the comprehensive plan, and we want open space, we want parks, we want beauty in our city. Please, stop it now. We cannot continue with this, coming to this point. Please, do the right thing tonight. Do not allow this to be built. Thank you. And...
Thank you. And I'm seeing no questions for you. Appreciate your time.
Does it always mean that we forget what we have till it's gone? Let's not build another development.
All right. Gary Ray? Is Gary here? I'll move on to Carl Mann.
Hi, my name is, oh, did I think? Oh, you got the timer right there. I was wondering how that went.
Right, and yeah, please speak into the microphone.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Carl Mann. I live over on Balsam Street, just right off the park. Moved in about two years ago, and it is interesting, even the prices, the development is already affecting our real estate values, at least. I know my neighbors, a couple of them have rentals, and they're talking about how it's harder to rent it, and just the controversy is just making Lakewood look kind of bad. And one of the things, I'm not a millennial, obviously, quite older, but we saved for years and years to move in next to the park because we wanted that park, we wanted that environment, just the ability to walk our dogs and do that sort of thing. And now, basically, we're going to have a high-rise stuck on it. And I think the best, the best example was what you brought up about the police. I mean, yeah, there's speed limits, they can't arbitrarily enforce them, but let's say there's an accident on Wadsworth, and somebody's coming down going 45. The police are going to tell them to slow down so they don't run over the emergency personnel. And right now, you've basically got developers coming down, probably about 60, given you didn't bother to even get permits to demolish the building. So, yeah, I think you guys really do have it in your court to slow them down, to stop it, to make it a more appropriate project, and not just basically tell everybody who already owns, "Well, tough luck. We're going to stick this high-rise here, and it's your problem." Anyhow, that's all I got. Thank you guys very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
One more thing, you mentioned a vacancy. How does somebody apply for that vacancy on your committee? Oh, thanks.
The vacancy will be advertised, I understand. Well, it was advertised, I believe, in the last month on lakewood.org, and so the community has been able to apply for some time. I don't, I believe the application deadline passed a week ago.
Chair Buckley, he can direct that question to me, and I can address it later or at another time.
All right, yeah, go, yeah, talk to staff afterwards.
They can, they can tell you. Commissioner O'Neill has a question for you, Mr. Mann.
So just really quickly, you're the second person that's brought up demolition without permit happening over here. Where's that information coming from?
Gosh, I think it's just common knowledge at this point, that I believe it might have been in the Denver Post, not, yeah, the Denver Post, there was a article that stated that essentially the demolition was going, and it was kind of loud and obnoxious. And then there was a newspaper article about, that they had to stop it for a couple of days to actually get the proper permits. So I, and I guess that's actually part of my point. It's pretty clear that this development is, they're not intending to be good neighbors. They're not even trying. And you guys really, I think, owe it to the citizens of Lakewood to stop it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Any staff. How does that permit process, where, I mean, I've always understood that the demolition process is pretty rigorous, so, and the permit?
Demo permit is applied for through the building department, and I can confirm a demo permit was pulled for this project. Grading permits have not been pulled yet, but grading work has also not started on the site yet.
So demo permit was pulled?
Correct.
Prior to...
Prior to demolition.
Demolition. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Pafford, were there any other permits that were necessary besides the demolition permit for any of the demolition or related work that's happened on the site to date?
I can't speak to that. I, I do not believe so. Permits that are required are pulled. I don't manage building permits.
Can anyone else speak to that from staff?
Oh, actually, we have someone here who maybe will speak to that.
Thanks.
My name is Ben Maven. I'm with the City of Lakewood Public Works Department. Typically, for a building demo like that, the demolition department is the only thing that's really required. We try to restrict work outside of that, because once they start, once they start tearing up the rest of the site, it creates other problems for grading with damage control and some other things. So, yeah, so that's our typical process for how that would work. There's some, there's typically work that has to happen prior to a demo permit, going through, looking at what the condition of the building is, and that's all part of the application. But that, the actual permit that we issue is just the demo permit.
Okay. I'll ask a very direct question, and if you don't have the facts to answer properly, then by all means, don't. But just to the point, did the demolition that occurred on that site follow all the rules and permits that it needed to?
As I...
To the best of our knowledge.
I don't know the full answer to that, but to the best of my knowledge, that is the case.
Okay. Commissioner Williams, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to be super clear on this with staff. There's no evidence at this point that any demolition occurred on the site without a permit, or that any of our local laws or ordinances were violated during the demolition on that property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. That's a good way to state it. Mario Hernandez is the next person signed up. Mr. Hernandez seems to have left the building. Linay James.
My name is Linay James. I live in Ward 5, and I want to speak to something that I haven't heard anyone address. And I was used to seeing people being able to point. So I have, with blue, circled the areas where there is parking, and you see two Ps. The one at the bottom is where the Heritage Center is. The one at the top is what's in front of our building. And it, we know there's a lot more parking below. Those are the only parking identified in that 2019 document. And then, since I have lived here, which has been for 38 years, the two buildings that are in between those parking areas, which are the ironstone buildings, have allowed people to use their parking when there are events at the Heritage Center and on there, they have been business buildings that are open during the day, but not seemingly on the night or weekends. And at those times, citizens have been able to park. And on the left of where the 777 Yarrow building is, there's parking right there, up against the edge of the park. And of the D on the, to the left of that, is where the people walk and can look out to that, what looks like a little island in the center that you can't see them run, which is where the bird rookery is. So the entryway paths come from that side of this property, and people could park, walk, see that area, park. I'm in a walking group that goes every Saturday in good weather and walks around all the lakes. If you look above that property, you see a space between the black mark on the outside, which is the edge of the park and the lake, and you can follow that space all the way around the lakes. Much bigger on the bottom, there's one blockade to protection of space near the lakes, and that's the 777 Yarrow property. I have been concerned about the parking. I've walked the lots, not here, not counting here, but the parking for the Heritage Center has 160 spaces, marked spaces. The property above it has 180. It's not marked on the 777 Yarrow property, but it looks to be guesstimate, more than 200. And I'm hoping that you, as a planning commission, thinking about our 15-year plan, will address the parking needs here at the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. Mark Smith?
Does this have a timer on it?
I'm sure the clerk will read the timer here.
Okay, thanks. I'm a retired city planner. I was 25 years in the municipal planning profession. Ms. Pafford, in the staff report, says Article 1 and 2 does not apply to this project. Well, guess what? Article 1 and Article 2 do apply. Lakewood zoning code 17.1.3, relationship to the comprehensive plan. Let me read that. The Lakewood Comprehensive Plan establishes the goals and policy, the service foundation for the zoning ordinance. All land use decisions shall be consistent with the goals and policy of the comprehensive master plans, plural, in with the purpose and intent statements of the zoning code. But according to staff, that doesn't apply. That's just 17.1.3. Then let's go to 17.1.6, compliance with other adopted city standards. I won't read it because my time's limited. Then we'll go to 17.2.2.3. Public hearings allow, I won't read it, I'll cite it. Then I'll go to 17.2.2.3.1, planning applications. The zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, including all amendments, and the subdivision ordinance, shall be part of the record of every public hearing. As the planning commission talks... Has the planning commission talked at all about the comp plan here tonight? Of course not. Have you read the 126 comments? I noticed that, like, there's a bunch of five of seven have viewed. Have you actually read those? All of them? 126 comments. I've submitted over 200 pages, Ms. O'Neil. Have you read all 200 pages?
No.
Okay, you just were shaking your head yes. Yes, now you're shaking your head no.
I've read all the public comments.
Pardon me?
I've read all the public comments. I have not read them.
Well, they're in the public comments. They're attachments to public comments. I have over 200 pages of paper. Director Parker said there's no subjectivity in land use decisions. Wow. Given that, wow, what a statement. Given that the purpose and intent statements are required, purpose and intent of zoning code A, 17.1.2, to promote the public house safety and welfare of the citizens of the City of Lakewood. Boy, there can't be any discretion. That's just purely objective when you make a decision. And there are example after example after example of codes where subjective decisions have been made. Subjective decisions, by the way, which violate the very code standards. And my 46 document presentations, going back to December 2023, go over that and over that and over it and over it. The problem with this project is that it's about greed. Zero sensitivity to a highly sensitive site. According to Mr. Parker, every site is the same. They're all the same. There's no unique individuality. That's been stated before the planning commission before. That's the problem with this project. There's an opportunity, and I said it months and months ago, as did others, to have win-win opportunities here. But that means smart. That means being bright. That means having foresight. That means the applicant is not all about taking every dime out of the property. I don't know how more apparent that can be.
Your time is up, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith, from the commission?
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you for, um, your dedication and clear, obvious passion. I...
I'd like to know if you've read all the documents.
I read everything that you posted on Lakewood Speaks.
I've submitted over 200 pages, including documents at 4:00 this afternoon.
I, I skimmed through the documents you submitted at 4:00 this afternoon, from 4:00 this afternoon until 6:00.
Chair Buckley, if we are going to talk, we need to, we need to do it from the podium, please.
Sure. Susan McNeven.
Thank you. So I live in Ward Four, come over to the park quite often. And first of all, there have been a lot of comments tonight about the scope, the environment, the birds, the wildlife, everything. And, and they're all very viable. And I know there were also a few people that mentioned about housing. And I agree with them, you know, that we need more housing, but there are a lot of options around here. There are a lot of, you know, vacated buildings. There are a lot of place, if anybody's gone by, like Kipling and about 10th, where there's a, an old gas station and it's just piled with junk, you know? It's across the street from some church and they need to do some. But there's a lot of places where this is, is not one of them. But one thing that hasn't been mentioned today is what's inside of this project? Okay, we know there's, what is it, 411 units? Well, what is a unit? Are they all one bedrooms? Are they two bedrooms? What is the projected number of residents that are going to be there? And there are 500 and some odd parking spaces. Well, how many adults might be there? Or, you know, a couple with some teenagers? How many cars? What are going to happen to those extra cars that there aren't spaces for to park there? And, um, you know, so how, how many? What's the, the, the projected number of people that are going to be there, living there, causing all the extra, you know, traffic? And then we have all these schools that have been shutting down because, oh, we don't have enough kids, you know? So we've been dropping in enrollment. Well, how many kids are going to be at these apartments, suddenly needing schools? Well, we've closed all these schools. So now where are the kids going to go? Do we have to start building more schools because we have more kids? And, and, you know, somebody mentioned greed. Well, I, you know, that is a harsh word, but it's true reality. So I would like to ask the developers, do they really want to go forward with this project? If you look at me, is it really that important for you to do this, given all of the, the really good comments people have here objecting to this, to the scope of it? I mean, you're, like, the one that talked about all the, the shades, all the lost habitats, the wildlife. I mean, all of those are viable. And yes, we need more housing, but there has to be, you know, common sense with it. Like, I live in a house that's surrounded by houses. Should I be able to suddenly decide, oh, lot line to lot line, I want to build a five-story apartment building? No, maybe because that doesn't suit the neighborhood. Well, this huge, huge behemoth of a building does not fit the area, you know? So if they want to build a smaller project there, that's one thing. But what they've proposed is just not suitable for the location. And so I would ask them, please reconsider, please reconsider what you're planning to do. You might have the right to do it. They might approve it, but just because you can, should you? And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay. We have come to the end of the list of people who signed up to speak for public comment.
Did I find the article? Can I send it for presentation?
Go, go ahead, I...
Lauren, how could we proceed?
Lauren?
Yeah. If somebody, if somebody else wants to testify before the commission, but I'm not, I do not recommend adding time for any one single person because then you would have to apply that to everybody in the room.
Yeah.
So if somebody else that you know here would like to present this, they can, that hasn't already spoken.
Thank you.
It's just an article, just as out of control demolition has started at Iron Gate Complex. You know, I do not know.
All right.
Sorry, I just found it because it seemed like there's a relevant question.
All right, all right, sir, sir, all right, all right. Sir, we're, yeah, this is, we're, we're getting a little bit of out of order here. Let's decide what we're doing. Sir, leave your name with the clerk, please, and, and state your name when you come up here.
Sure. My name's John Gaito, and I'm in Ward Four. So there's a article posted on the Lakewood Informer dated March 15th, 2025. And it, the title of the article is "Out of Control Demolition Has Started at Iron Gate Complex. Greetings From Supporters Of Save Belmar Park. Karoki Belmar Project Is Moving Forward With No Active Citizen Objections. Will This Rogue Development, Demolition Mess Be A Wake-Up Call?" The top image is of 777 South Yarrow Street, and it shows demolition. It's in progress in the article. The demolition was approved on March 12th by Lakewood. So the city is fully aware of what is happening. However, the contractor has not installed any evasion, erosion control devices, silt fences, et cetera, required by the Kimley-Horn specifications shown in the second image above. They began demolition on March 13th in violation of their own established sequence of construction activities as specified by Kimley-Horn engineers. And we assume this has been okayed with the city manager and the city council because the city would have approved everything at the required meeting before the demolition began, as stated on page 11 of the Erosion and Sediment Control Report. Then the article actually attaches said report. That concludes what's listed on the article.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I will note that we've had the testimony of city staff that there is no evidence that the city possesses, that the developer lacked the proper permits for the demolition of that building, notwithstanding what someone wrote on a blog on the internet. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to comment, who did not sign up to speak and has not spoken yet? All right, seeing none, we've been sitting down for about three hours now. It's five minutes till 10:00. Uh, I'm going to use the chair's discretion to call for about a 10-minute recess, and then we will come back for commissioner questions and discussion. Thank you. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner O'Neill. Thank you. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner O'Neill. Thank you, Vice Chair. My question is for the applicant, if you don't mind coming up to the podium.
There was a question raised during the public comment portion about pay parking on-site. I was wondering if you could help us clarify, will residents of this facility have to pay for parking when they live there, or will the cost of parking be included in their rent?
Yeah, so for parking, we're meeting the city zoning requirements, we're actually providing an extra 19 spaces than what's required by code for parking. With respect to what we charge for parking or don't charge for parking, that'll be just determined by market at the time of opening. Some of our communities, we charge for parking, some of it's included in rent. So, right now, we don't know at this point, but it'll be included in the rent one way or another.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Vice Chair. My question is for staff. I am looking at page 14 of the memo. And the section where we are going over the superior building design. So, as I read these, we're talking about the waiver here, as I read C, for example, the waiver, or I'm sorry, B, "The waiver will better serve the intent of the zone district in which the property is located." Better as to what?
Good question, it's kind of a subjective statement. And what staff is maintaining is that this is supporting the zone district's intent to create higher-density development in downtown Lakewood. And the proposed architectural elements are intended to create comfortable outdoor spaces that help activate that facade step-back area. So, if you looked at the alternative images that the applicant prepared, there really is, there may be a little bit of outdoor balcony space above the third story, but there's not a lot of the overhangs and privacy screens that will kind of help create comfortable outdoor spaces that will really be activated and used. So, I think the thought is that if people are outdoor, watching the street, actively engaging in enjoyment of those areas, that it is better serving the intent of the district to have those than to not have the encroachments, or to have a space that isn't as pleasing or comfortable to be in.
I see. So, we are comparing the waiver version...
The proposed building design.
The proposed building to what could be the proposed building that was in conformance or did not require a waiver, correct?
Right, it's looking at the elements of the requested waiver to really see, are those elements helping serve the intent of the zone district? Are they better serving the intent than a building that just meets the strict letter of the law would?
I see. And, this might be for counsel as well, but as I go through these different factors, C, "The waiver will not substantially impair the appropriate use or development of adjacent property as compared to a strictly conforming..."
Correct.
"...building," right? And the same goes for D.
Correct.
"This proposal will not alter the character of the neighborhood or area where the project is proposed as compared to a strictly conforming building."
Right, allowing the encroachments will not substantially impair redevelopment of adjacent properties.
I see. I think there might be a tendency among some who have spoken today to think that it's compared to what is currently there, or nothing, no development.
I did hear that as well tonight.
Okay, but that is not what we are here to consider.
Correct, we're looking at the proposal for a superior design, and so we're really looking at those elements that the applicant has brought forward that constitute a superior design and why the planning commission should consider allowing this or not.
Thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So, I had a couple of questions for staff. Sorry. Oh, first, there's been a lot about parking this evening. Is there any plan by the city to put parking at the Heritage Center or, I mean, I don't know where that would be, but I'm just curious if that's being looked at?
I do believe that it is recognized that parking for the Heritage Center in events is something that the city needs to address. I do believe they are exploring a lot of different options. I don't have specific details about the who, what, where. I believe that they also utilize a temporary parking lot system to the north of this site. Just for events.
Right, right, okay, thank you. And then, also, as far as, a little bit was brought up tonight about just existing infrastructure, the state of the streets, probably stormwater, I mean, I don't know all of the things. Also, I think this would sort of speak to the same area danger in crossing the street because of all the curves or neoangles in that existing Yarrow Street. Is there any intention, and I don't know if this is a question for the developer or for staff, is there any intention to, what upgrades are happening, is there any intention to put some sort of a crosswalk or a flashing light for, I mean, not a stoplight, but some sort of indicator for safe crossing?
I do not believe so, but I would like to confer with some folks in our Public Works Department.
Okay.
Yeah, come on forward, please.
Good evening, Kelly Dunn, Public Works, Transportation Engineering. No, we do not have any plans for a type of enhanced crosswalk. When the city puts in enhanced crosswalks, either with striping or rapid flashing beacon, we make sure that there's enough pedestrian volume to warrant that, as well as vehicle volumes, so we consider all of those factors. We really only want to put in these enhanced crosswalks in locations where we want to encourage pedestrians to cross and know that drivers can expect them.
So, maybe this is part of the reason for wanting to do a traffic study, I don't know if that was me, sorry, traffic study after the building is in place to see what kind of traffic is incurred by that?
Yeah, that point was brought up earlier, I want to clarify the intent there, so the traffic study that was submitted, that helps us understand what required mitigation. And our traffic study is fairly limited in the way that our transportation engineering design standards are written. We're looking at level of service at intersections, and that's a measure of delay, and that can lead to improvements at intersections such as adding signalization if there wasn't any, or left turn lanes, right turn lanes, et cetera. We can't really get into some of these other operational impacts like crosswalks that you're asking about, or concerns like traffic calming. Those are things that do fall on Public Works to address operationally, so we don't really have a mechanism right now to address those, but we acknowledge that when there is more traffic on a roadway, that we will have to react to that like we would on any other roadways in the city.
Okay, thank you. And then, any other infrastructure, like stormwater, or sewer, or other?
There are several public improvements that are required with this. If the commission would like specifics, I can have the review engineer list those out for you.
I think it would be good to have on the record, actually, if that's all right.
Okay.
Ken?
Good evening, everyone. Ken Hargrave, Lakewood Public Works, Engineering Division. As far as public improvements that are required for this project, it's a new detached sidewalk, eight-foot-wide sidewalk along Yarrow Street, as well as some improved driveway improvements for the existing access on the south end of the project on Yarrow, and then a new driveway improvement, meeting city standards on the north side. And then, other improvements would include the portion of the public storm sewer outfall from the detention facility to the Coons Lake drainage outfall.
Thank you. And then, I had a question for the development team, I think, someone, my question is just intended rent for, cost of rent, because there's been a lot of discussion about luxury pricing, and I'm just curious what the rent intention, I know that you're probably still working on that as costs incur through construction, but just, what are you going for?
Yeah, as I mentioned, Commissioner Williams, I mean, we're still years out from opening our doors here, I mean, we'll have a mix of Studio 1, 2, and 3-bedroom apartments. I know that some of the, you know, public asked questions about what the intended unit mix for the project was, and so, I mean, ultimately, we believe that we'll meet the market of what the rental rates are, I mean, there's lots of competition, as some other public members have mentioned, right? It's very competitive in terms of so many people wanting to live in Lakewood and wanting to live in a community that's new and that they can call their home, and so, ultimately, it's our job to try to provide our residents with homes and amenities and finishes and management service levels where they'll pay at the market of what those rental rates are at the time, whatever those rental rates are here, you know, three, four, or five years down the road.
So, market rate, not luxury rate apartments?
Market rate apartments, yeah, the market will determine what we charge.
What that cost is.
For the apartments.
And then, can you speak to the condition of some of the trees that have been removed? Were they all healthy trees? I don't know if that's a question for staff or development, but I'm just curious, there's been a lot of talk about the tree removal this evening.
We haven't removed any trees on-site at this point.
But you plan to remove trees?
We do, pursuant with the site plan.
Right, so, are they all healthy trees?
Yeah, there's, in our major site plan, there's a tree log, if you will, that delineates the size of the trees, the species of the trees, the size of the trees, and the health of the trees.
Yeah.
And so, I believe there's nine trees on-site that were deemed to be unhealthy or dead that don't qualify or apply towards mitigation requirements.
Okay.
And so, we'll remove those trees as part of the removal of the other trees that are in the tree legend.
I think that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners at the moment? I have a few questions for various members of staff, probably, let's start off with for Public Works, Commissioner O'Neill mentioned the public improvements a moment ago, and we heard that there will be a stormwater outfall into Coons Lake. We heard some public testimony earlier this evening that the site plan will reduce the amount of stormwater runoff going into that lake and cause the water level to be lower. Can someone on staff speak to that, if that is accurate, or what will the condition of the lake be post-construction with the public improvements?
Just to make a slight correction, the storm sewer outfall does not go directly to Coons Lake in the proposed condition, it actually goes to a drainage channel that's an outfall from Coons Lake, so that stormwater does go around the lake to the outfall from Coons Lake, if that makes sense. As far as impacts to the lake itself, there is an existing drainage basin that runs off to Coons Lake for about, probably about a third of the site approximately. How the runoff, the proposed runoff condition will affect the lake level, though, I'm not really sure of that impact.
Okay, was that impact analyzed in any of the drainage studies or reports?
No, it was not. Thanks, Paul.
Okay. In general, I believe it's true that, you know...
Nothing, no development.
I did hear that as well tonight.
Okay, but that is not what we are here to consider?
Correct, we're looking at the proposal for a superior design. And so we're really looking at those elements that the applicant has brought forward that constitute a superior design and why the planning commission should consider allowing this or not.
Thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So I had a couple of questions for staff. Sorry. Oh, first, there's been a lot about parking this evening. Is there any plan by the city to put parking at the Heritage Center? Or, I don't know where that would be, but I'm just curious if that's being looked at?
I do believe that it is recognized that parking for the Heritage Center in events is something that the city needs to address. I do believe they are exploring a lot of different options. I don't have specific details about the who, what, where. I believe that they also utilize a temporary parking lot system to the north of this site. For, just for events.
Right, right, okay, thank you. And then also, as far as, a little bit was brought up tonight about just existing infrastructure, the state of the streets, probably stormwater. I mean, I don't know all of the things. Also, I think this would sort of speak to the same area danger in crossing the street because of all the curves or neoangles in that existing Yarrow Street. Is there any intention, and I don't know if this is a question for the developer or for staff, is there any intention to, what upgrades are happening? Is there any intention to put some sort of a crosswalk or a flashing light for cross, I mean, not a stoplight, but some sort of indicator for safe crossing?
I do not believe so, but I would like to confer with some folks in our Public Works Department.
Okay.
Yeah, come on forward, please.
Good evening, Kelly Dunn, Public Works, Transportation Engineering. No, we do not have any plans for a type of enhanced crosswalk. When the city puts in enhanced crosswalks, either with striping or rapid flashing beacon, we make sure that there's enough pedestrian volume to warrant that, as well as vehicle volumes. So we consider all of those factors. We really only want to put in these enhanced crosswalks in locations where we want to encourage pedestrians to cross and know that drivers can expect them.
So, maybe this is part of the reason for wanting to do a traffic study, I don't know if that was me, sorry, traffic study after the building is in place to see what kind of traffic is incurred by that?
Yeah, that point was brought up earlier. I want to clarify the intent there. So the traffic study that was submitted, that helps us understand what required mitigation. And our traffic study is fairly limited in the way that our transportation engineering design standards are written. We're looking at level of service at intersections, and that's a measure of delay. And that can lead to improvements at intersections such as adding signalization if there wasn't any, or left turn lanes, right turn lanes, et cetera. We can't really get into some of these other operational impacts like crosswalks that you're asking about, or concerns like traffic calming. Those are things that do fall on Public Works to address operationally. So we don't really have a mechanism right now to address those, but we acknowledge that when there is more traffic on a roadway that we will have to react to that like we would on any other roadways in the city.
Okay, thank you. And then, any other infrastructure, like stormwater or sewer or other?
There are several public improvements that are required with this. If the commission would like specifics, I can have the review engineer list those out for you.
I think it would be good to have on the record, actually.
Okay.
If that's all right.
Ken?
Good evening, everyone. Ken Hargrave, Lakewood Public Works, Engineering Division. As far as public improvements that are required for this project, it's a new detached sidewalk, eight-foot-wide sidewalk along Yarrow Street, as well as some improved driveway improvements for the existing access on the south end of the project on Yarrow. And then a new driveway improvement meeting city standards on the north side. And then other improvements would include the portion of the public storm sewer outfall from the detention facility to the Coons Lake drainage outfall.
Thank you. And then I had a question for the development team, I think, someone. My question is just intended rent for cost of rent? Because there's been a lot of discussion about luxury pricing. And I'm just curious what the rent intention? I know that you're probably still working on that as costs incur through construction, but just what are you going for?
Yeah, as I mentioned, Commissioner Williams, I mean, we're still, you know, years out from opening our doors here. I mean, we'll have a mix of Studio One, Two, and Three bedroom apartments. I know that some of the, you know, public asked questions about what the intended unit mix for the project was. And so, I mean, ultimately, we believe that, you know, we'll meet the market of what the rental rates are. I mean, there's lots of competition, as you know, some other public members have mentioned, right? It's very competitive in terms of so many people wanting to live in Lakewood and wanting to live, you know, in a community that's new and that they can call their home. And so ultimately, it's our job to, you know, try to provide our residents with, you know, homes and amenities and finishes and, you know, management service levels where they'll pay, you know, at the market of what those rental rates are at the time, whatever those rental rates are here, you know, three, four, five years down the road.
So market rate, not luxury rate apartments?
Market rate apartments, yeah. The market will determine what we charge.
What that cost is.
For the apartments.
And then, can you speak to the condition of some of the trees that have been removed? Have, were they all healthy trees? Were, I don't know if that's a question for staff or development, but I'm just curious. There's been a lot of talk about the tree removal this evening.
We haven't removed any trees on site at this point.
But you plan to remove trees?
We do, pursuant with the site plan.
Right, so are they all healthy trees?
Yeah, there's, in our major site plan, there's a tree log, if you will, that, you know, delineates the size of the trees, the species of the trees, the size of the trees, and the health of the trees.
Yeah.
And so I believe there's nine trees on site that, you know, were deemed to be unhealthy or dead that, you know, don't qualify or apply towards mitigation requirements.
Okay.
And so we'll remove those trees as part of the removal of the other trees that are in the tree legend.
I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners at the moment? I have a few questions for various members of staff, probably. Let's start off with, for Public Works, Commissioner O'Neil mentioned the public improvements a moment ago, and we heard that there will be a stormwater outfall into Coons Lake. We heard some public testimony earlier this evening that the site plan will reduce the amount of stormwater runoff going into that lake and cause the water level to be lower. Can someone on staff speak to that? If that is accurate, or what will the condition of the lake be post-construction with the public improvements?
Just to make a slight correction, the storm sewer outfall does not go directly to Coons Lake in the proposed condition. It actually goes to a drainage channel that's an outfall from Coons Lake. So that stormwater does go around the lake to the outfall from Coons Lake, if that makes sense. As far as impacts to the lake itself, there is an existing drainage basin that runs off to Coons Lake for about, probably about a third of the site approximately. How the runoff, the proposed runoff condition will affect the lake level, though, I'm not really sure of that impact.
Okay, was that impact analyzed in any of the drainage studies or reports?
No, it was not. Thanks, Paul.
Okay. Yeah, in general, I believe it's true that, you know, it's a requirement that stormwater runoff that is generated by a site itself be treated by a site itself. And so I imagine that is the reason why the site is designed to channel that runoff water that's currently leaving the site into the underground detention basin, then out the stormpipe network to the channel that's downstream of the lake. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. There was some concern expressed by Community Resources with having a direct discharge to the lake itself for a number of reasons. And also, in the review of the project, we considered several factors, including impacts to the adjacent residents at Belmar Commons, impacts downstream to the Lakewood Heritage Center. Although those locations receive historic drainage flow now, kind of a common goal with the drainage design was that those areas be looked at and make sure that those neighborhoods in the Heritage Center was not negatively impacted by the drainage design. So that was one of the factors in coming up with the solution for routing the storm sewer down to the Coons Lake outfall.
Okay, and you mentioned the Belmar Commons neighborhood across the street on Yarrow. Can you clarify or elaborate on the difference in stormwater that goes to that site today versus in the post-construction condition that's proposed?
Would you like some numbers, for example?
Numbers are great, qualitative description of what's happening now that's not going to happen, or vice versa?
Sure, I could do that. Give me just a moment, if you don't mind, and I'll look at the drainage plan.
Okay, so we'll come back to you then. While you're looking that up, Commissioner Williams, do you want to ask some questions?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair. I just want to, I'm looking at page, I believe, nine of the staff report here towards the bottom under 17.5.3 mixed-use zone district standards. In reviewing many of the 167 comments on Lakewood speaks, as well as hearing from many members of the public here tonight, there's a lot of concern over the size and the height of this structure. And I just want to make sure that I have a clear understanding of what we're talking about here. What I'm seeing is a proposed height of 81 feet. The minimum height for this district is 30 feet, and the maximum is 120 feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's my understanding, then, that this, the applicant has proposed a structure that is actually not as tall as the maximum allowed on this site, correct?
Correct, by 40 feet.
By 40 feet. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood what we're talking about. And to just really put a fine point on this, the minimum height of any building constructed on this site would have to be 30 feet according to our current zoning laws. Is that correct?
That's correct, 30 feet and at least two stories.
And at least two stories. Okay, thank you for helping us understand sort of what we're talking about in terms of the parameters that we're looking on this, with this property. I think that's really helpful context as we, you know, engage in this rich community discussion. So thank you.
All right, do we have an answer on my stormwater question? Or do we, do you still need another?
I do, yes, thank you. So specifically, I believe you asked what the difference would be to the drainage that would go to the Belmar Commons project, as that gets routed to that project. Historically, right now, in the existing condition, it's 2.4 CFS for the five-year storm, 6.2 CFS for the 100-year storm. In the proposed condition, there's a bit of minor basin that goes to the street that would end up at that location significantly less. It's 0.18 CFS for the five-year storm, 0.46 CFS for the 100-year storm. So a lot less runoff going to the Belmar Commons development.
Okay, okay, so you said about 6-point-something cubic feet per second from the site as it exists today runs off into the Belmar Commons neighborhood if there were a 100-year storm event, and that's going to be reduced to less than one cubic foot per second runoff?
That's correct.
Okay, and so in the question, where is that water going instead? It's going into the underground detention vault on site and then draining off into the channel in the park, is that right?
That's correct, at a detained release rate.
Right, okay, yeah, of course. And yes, the underground detention meters the flow out of the underground detention over time so that, to protect the channel and stability and water quality and all that stuff, right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, great. I had a question about grading on the site. The site plan on page two, I believe it is, shows that there is an area of grading on the west side of the parcel that goes into Belmar Park. So like, there's an area between the trail that's in the park, kind of going up into the site that it shows grading extending into the park. As a general rule, when you're working on a site plan, your box of where you can work is the site. And if you're doing something outside the site, that requires an agreement with a neighboring property owner, which in this case is the city because it's the park, or a public improvement agreement, or something like that. So I'd be interested in someone who knows from staff describing what the process was for determining that grading was needed in the park and negotiating that with a developer of, you know, how we came to a point where it's acceptable for the developer to do grading off of their own site.
Yeah, I think I can speak to that as well. So throughout the review process, obviously grading was a concern and seeing how that relates to property lines, and that's typical of any project, really. So through some discussions with Community Resources, it was decided that some minor grading along the west side of the property might be appropriate to help the site better blend into the park at that corner and along the trail edge. That being said, if we were to go back and look at it again, or something were to be revised, the grading could be revised such that the grading could be contained entirely within the property limits of that corner. It just means steeper slopes, potentially a small retaining wall. And I think the thought process was that not having steep slopes, not having retaining walls, would help the site blend in better with the park surroundings at the project edge.
Okay, and how much grading are we talking about? I had our time telling that from the site plan. What's the relative grade change in that area that's being graded?
Approximately one to two feet, based on contours.
Okay, one to two feet is like the maximum amount of fill that we placed over the existing ground?
That's correct.
Yeah, and what would be done to revegetate that area and, you know, control erosion and so forth during construction?
So the portion that's on the site will have to meet the requirements of the landscape plan, the approved landscape plan. Portions beyond that into the park will have to be restored in accordance with Community Resources' seed mix requirements. They provided a specific seed mix on the construction plans that meets their requirements for restoring that property.
Okay, and so, Community Resources' seed mix requirement, is it safe to say that that's a seed mix that they've, in the past, used in Belmar Park when it's appropriate to revegetate or do some planting somewhere or when any other work has ever happened in the park in the past?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, like, I'm thinking specifically, you know, as a frequent user of the park, I recall, oh, I don't know, five or six years ago, they replaced a lot of the concrete paths throughout that park. I remember watching the construction, they did a lot of seed mix restoration. So, like, I think that's come back quite nicely along the newer sidewalks compared to what was there before. So they would presumably use the same speed mix for this revegetation effort that they used back then that's since blended in with the park.
I would assume that is the case. And again, I know that information came specifically from Community Resources for that park restoration.
Okay, so to succinctly recap everything, you know, yes, in general, you know, a property owner doesn't have the right to do work or grade on someone else's property unless you get consent and permission. But in this case, the city, Community Resources, who manages the park, and the developer work together and, you know, agree that it would be a superior blending in with the park to do this minor grading work.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that all sounds very reasonable. And another question about the open space requirement. The staff presentation did note that the 30% minimum open space requirement is being met, 30.1% of the site is open space. I did not find anything in the zoning code when I was searching for it that specifically said that you could count part of your open space requirement on a rooftop or in an interior courtyard. But I also did not find anything that specifically says you cannot. Can you speak to, yeah, the rationale of allowing the open space to be interior to the building and, in one case, literally on top of the building? And are there precedent examples of that in Lakewood?
Yes, we have a longstanding practice policy to allow a portion of the rooftop, if it is enhanced with pedestrian amenities and plaza amenities, to count towards the open space requirement. We have a lot of great views here, and projects like to take advantage of that and have nice community areas on their roof deck. There is a limit to it, though. We limit it to no more than 20% of your minimum required open space area may be utilized as a roof amenity area.
Okay, and is that 20% limit codified somewhere in the zoning?
It is not codified, but the zoning ordinance uses 20% very regularly when making a designation for instance between a minor variance and a major variance. 20% of site disturbance kicks you into the major site plan process. So it is a number, a percentage, that is used regularly throughout the site plan for, to allow some minor improvements without maybe necessarily having to go through the full set process.
Okay, and is this 20% rule, especially with respect to counting the open space on a roof, is that, if not codified in some written policy or guidance document that can be consistently pointed to and applied?
No, there is nothing in the zoning ordinance that says you may use rooftop.
Okay, but it's been the past practice of the planning department?
For years, yes.
Yeah, so are there examples of precedent, multifamily housing buildings in Lakewood that have done this?
Pretty much every multifamily building that I've been involved in reviewing does have some sort of rooftop amenity area and/or ground-level courtyard amenity areas, or both. Townhome proxies are also pretty frequently providing rooftop amenity areas for those units.
Okay, thank you. There's been a lot of discussion about trees tonight, obviously. So my next few questions are about those. Our landscape code requires the director, or wherever it says director, that could also mean a designee in the planning department, to determine in consultation with a city forester whether or not it's feasible to retain existing trees on site that are of the caliper size, you know, large enough to be classified as a protected tree. And if it's reasonably feasible, then the code goes on to say that they should be saved. And if it's not feasible, then they're either replaced, or there's a fee in lieu, right? And in this case, the applicant is taking advantage of both those options, both the fee and lieu and the replacement option for the trees that are being replaced. Just walk me through the process of the planning staff consultation with a city forester to make the determination about what was feasible to retain and not feasible, and what defines feasibility?
Generally, the city forester walks with the site with planning staff and the applicant, and they take an assessment of the trees. Generally speaking, we are looking for consistency in the information they have prepared. So the applicant is required to prepare a plan that shows all existing trees on site. They need to identify their size and caliber inches and their species. Species that are nuisance species do not need to be mitigated. They can be removed without requiring mitigation. Trees that are over eight inches that are not diseased or dying are considered protected trees. And the city forester, in consultation, did not determine that it was reasonably feasible to save any of those trees, or that there were any trees on site that were so special or valuable that they absolutely needed to be protected. Through the review process, there, the applicant did make some revisions. And there are trees that are being protected today, and primarily, those are on the property that will be dedicated to the city. But most of those trees were slated to be removed. And so there was an effort to look at this project and identify where it was feasible to protect trees, and that has been done. The remainder of the trees are either going to be mitigated by new trees caliber inch, and the remainder of that will be satisfied with fee.
Okay, and to press just a little more, a very silly question, what defines feasibility?
I think if it is a minor shift to something to, that can happen to protect a tree, that is the direction we'd like to go. It was, there was nothing with this project that was reasonably feasible to shift or adjust to protect additional trees.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's very noticeable, looking at the site, that many of the trees are around the perimeter of the existing building, right? Or like in islands in the parking lot. It strikes me from walking around the site that, you know, perhaps they were planted intentionally long ago, you know, in relation to, you know, that existing building.
Probably, yeah, probably when the office buildings were built. Those are actually probably tiny little trees that were planted.
Right, and so, you know, just the nature of the existing structure being larger, you know, there's new trees being planted on the perimeter of this building, as noted in the site plan, but that's not the same location, so.
Correct, and I will go as far to say that there is a more diverse tree species that will occur from the outcome of this than what exists there today.
Yeah, that sounds good. Can you elaborate on that?
So we do have requirements that require diversity in species so that you can't come in and just plant all elm trees or all oak trees. And so the site plan does address the diversity species requirements. But here, I can give you a quick look and count.
Yeah, when I was reviewing the site plan...
Yeah, there's quite a few, quite a few species that are proposed. And just give me one sec.
Yeah, when I was reviewing it, I think I counted 16 species of trees that are proposed. You know, I did not count the existing number of species, but, yeah, I did note there's a bit more variety than the existing trees.
And I think trees that are kind of proven to do very well in our climate.
Right, I know you're not the city forester. Can you comment on the trees that are on site there, how well-climate adapted they are?
I can't, yeah, I'm not an expert or arborist, but I do know that evergreen trees are starting to struggle a bit in our climate. It's hotter, less water available, and they like a lot of water.
Yeah. Okay, with respect to the fee and lieu dedication money, the code cites a $1,200, you know, per tree that's not replaced.
Correct.
And it even goes on further to say that that money has to be spent on planting new trees in the same ward where the project's spent. So we know there's like $400,000 and change to be spent on planting new trees in Ward Three. Who decides what tree gets planted where and when?
I believe that would be up to the Community Resources Department. And I do believe that there is an intent to use some of these funds to plant additional trees in Belmar Park. And then I think there's, they've specified other areas where they will go after that.
Okay, is there any formal plan yet, or just kind of this vague intent?
Not that I'm aware of.
That it will be, it'll be Belmar Park and other places in Ward Three?
Correct.
On a typical site plan project, when you receive fee and lieu money for tree dedication, what's the lag between when you get the funds and the trees get planted? I mean, we all know government processes can take a while, right? So how soon does the community get these trees that the developer is paying for?
I don't, I don't know that, I can't speak to that, yeah, I don't know.
I'll address that. I can't give you an exact time, but what I can tell you is, we started collecting the fees, I don't know what it is, five, 10 years ago. And it took a little time for Community Resources to figure out what they were getting because the site plan comes in, they get some money, and now what do we do with this money? Unfortunately, the previous forester is with the city and county of Denver, but he actually came up with a program. So they were doing it within a funding cycle once the fees came in. And what that means is it's time of year. So in May, they could probably have trees in the following May. If it was October, they probably would have trees in two Mays, right? So you go through a cycle and then you come back. So you could re... So you could reasonably say 12 to 18 months.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, there's there's I recognize those constraints. There's certain times of year where it's just most ideal to plant a tree for its long-term, you know, survivability and adaptability. And so obviously, you know, we all want those trees to be planted with the absolute best chance of survival. So along that thought, that leads me to another question, the trees that are being replaced on site, what are the requirements after, you know, the building permits are closed out, the site is done, there's occupancy permits, you know, what leverage does the city have to, you know, ensure that those trees are cared for and grow over time? You know, it's the communities express concerns, of course, I think we're all concerned that, yeah, of course, the new trees are do not have the benefits of old trees right away, but, you know, one day they will have more benefits than the day they are planted. And so, you know, what tools does the city have to ensure that the operator of a site cares for the trees properly so that they do live a long, healthy life?
Sure. Well, we can't guarantee that they will care for them, but if they do not, they must be replaced. So if a tree is not cared for, if it's not watered and it dies, then it has to be replaced. Anything that's approved with the site plan, I think it says the zoning ordinance says by the next growing season, that needs to be placed. So it's really a code enforcement issue. If we hear that a lot of trees have been cut down, they will go out on a site and they will look at the site plan and basically inform the property owner that those trees need to be replanted. Now, if they take down trees that are a size, then there would be mitigation requirements associated with that.
Okay. Yeah, so it's it's.
And they'd have to replant them.
It's like many other things. It's law, you have to follow it and it, you know, will enforce it if the trees die.
Correct.
Okay. I think I've talked about trees enough for now. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have a question about trees. You mentioned that there are a certain there's certain criteria or consideration from the arborist to protect trees that are considered special. And I'm curious if you could help us understand better what the criteria is that would define a tree as too special to remove?
I'm not aware of criteria. I think that that would be the expertise of the city forester to look at that. And there is at least one example of a tree in Lakewood where the city forester basically would not allow an applicant to remove it and/or do any grading work or site work within the zone of the tree.
Not to put you on the spot, do you know what that example is?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, Lauren's very familiar with this.
Hi, everyone. So I'm not aware of any specific criteria either, but having worked on this one particular site plan previously, I can tell you that the city forester takes a lot of factors into consideration. They'll look at the height, they'll look at the health, they'll look at the uniqueness of the tree. The example that Ms. Patford was referring to was an application to develop a site near South Webster Court, sort of southeast in the city. There was an American elm tree that was 76 feet tall and it was determined to be what is called a champion tree in, I guess, and again, I'm also not an arborist, so I don't want to hold myself out as some sort of expert, but it was the third largest American elm in the state. It was a quite beautiful tree. And so that was one where the city forester specifically told the property owner they could not do any, not only could they not damage the tree, but they had a very specific plan where they had to cordon off a certain, you know, number of feet around the tree. They couldn't dig to a certain depth and had to respect the drip line. It was a very involved process and legal got involved, so that's why I know so much about the tree. But in that case, again, I guess it, you know, there was a number of factors, but I think it was the height, the health, the fact that it was sort of a state, special state tree that was special to the state just because of its size and impressiveness. But unfortunately, the city forester was here, they would probably be able to tell you with more specificity why it was so important.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. Thank you. I I'm intrigued by the consistency between that and the example that was presented to us of other trees that have been saved. Specifically, I'm thinking of the example in London, which was a very historic tree. So I'm encouraged to understand that the city is aware of these kinds of special trees and the importance of preserving historic and unique trees. And I just want to confirm one more time, there was no, the city arborist did not find any evidence of a tree that fits that kind of criteria on this site, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll have some questions about going back to the traffic topic. Let me find my notes here. We heard some concerns and comments, I think spoken tonight, definitely on Lakewood Speaks regarding the traffic study, the volume counts were that that study is based on were initially collected during the COVID pandemic when traffic volumes were considerably lower. Could a traffic engineer speak to that and, you know, if that was considered in some way in the analysis or what the scale of impacts were with those volumes and what they would have been, you know, with larger, if anything like that was looked at?
Absolutely. So the existing traffic counts that were conducted for this study were collected in June of 2021, which we were coming out of our main lockdowns, but a lot of workers were still hybrid or remote. We followed our process at the time, which was collecting those counts. No one knows what to see the future is, so those were the counts that were used in the study and that was used as the baseline existing traffic volumes. And then that study has since been approved. I know there's also been some comments about the data being old, but at the time that the traffic study was approved, it did still meet all of our regulations for traffic studies. To your question about the magnitude, June 2021 or 2021 traffic in general in the city compared to our most recent citywide traffic volumes is about 15% lower. So these existing baseline traffic that was used in the study was about 15% lower than what we're seeing now. That's normal. That said, the level of service criteria that I mentioned earlier that would determine if mitigation is required, and that's any level of service, it's like an alphabet scale, A, B, C, D, E, F. Levels E and F, which are high levels of delay, require mitigation. This traffic study showed that the intersections in the study were all level of service C or better. So even if we were to incorporate a 15% inflation, that wouldn't be enough to bump those numbers from level of service C to D and then to E, which would require mitigation. So I would agree that the volumes used in the traffic study were lower than what we're seeing right now, but the outcome would be the same as what we're seeing for recommendations.
Okay. Yeah, so to succinctly summarize, the city's standard is the intersection should operate at the level of service E, which corresponds to a certain number of seconds of average delay per vehicle. And even with the additional traffic from this particular development, all the surrounding intersections are level of service C there.
In the current traffic study, they're C or better.
C or better.
I haven't done enough of an analysis with these, you know, current numbers to be able to make this determination.
But yeah, the numbers in the traffic study, the surrounding intersections are level of service C or better. And so, yeah, there's quite a bit of a difference in delay between C and E. I know that for a fact, but I don't know if you remember off the top of your head, I do not, the difference in delay per vehicle between like a level of service C or D or E. It's, I'm a little embarrassed because, you know, my day job's a traffic engineer, but I don't I don't remember that delay threshold off the top of my head.
I can pull it here in a moment from the traffic study.
Yeah.
Bear with me. Yes, so level of service C for a signalized intersection is a controlled delay between 20 and 35 seconds. So that's the average expected amount of time that a vehicle would wait at this intersection. So that's C. D is 35 to 55 seconds. Anything more than 55 seconds is what would push it into that level of service E, which would require the mitigation.
Right. So we're still quite a long ways off from requiring mitigation with with the added traffic to the the lower background volumes. But yeah, even if you increase that by 15%, I, yeah, I can see it's very reasonable to see you wouldn't be approaching the level of E threshold, most likely. I don't know, maybe that's obvious to me because, again, I've looked at traffic studies in my professional career, but I think that seems reasonable to say. Just for clarity, which intersections did this traffic study look at when we're saying everything C or better? What is the list of everything? What are the intersections considered?
The main two were the Wadsworth intersection, so Wadsworth in Virginia where we have a signal and then Wadsworth in Ohio and then Yarrow in Virginia and Yarrow in Ohio, unsignaled intersections.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit about events, right? I know that typically it's traffic engineering practice that, you know, we don't design for the worst hour of the year. I'm guessing, just with some familiarity of this area, that probably the worst traffic area of the year is like on cider days. You know, what is our design hour that is the standard in, you know, Lakewood's transportation engineering design standards for what a traffic study is trying to maintain that level of service E at? And, you know, do you think that the data collected actually accurately captures that, like design hour of the year?
Yes. So when the traffic study is conducted, like I mentioned, those existing traffic volumes get collected and those typically look at the AM, the morning peak hour and the PM, the evening peak hour, so your rush hours. And then those are the two scenarios that go through the more rigorous analysis because if we find we can accommodate traffic during these peaks, we know we can accommodate it during the rest of the year. Typically, traffic engineering, like you're saying, Commissioner Buckley, the higher events, some of these special days, those aren't what we use for our design because then we would overbuild our roadways, you'd see six lane arterial highways everywhere. There will be times of congestion when we see that higher traffic, like on these special events. So where cider days and these other, the summer concert series, those were not included in the traffic study. That is something that us in Public Works, we work with. So Community Resources reaches out to us. Right now, we have special timing plans for Wadsworth, Ohio, Wadsworth, Virginia to get traffic out of there when an event ends and to extend some of those left turn times to get traffic in. It's not perfect. There's a lot of vehicles that come through there. There will be congestion, but we do have ways to kind of work with what we have to try and accommodate that.
Yeah, absolutely. That that makes a lot of sense, yes. Signal timings are really flexible art. It gives you a lot of, a lot of space to accommodate different things, right? You know, within reason. So it's, I mean, that's the existing condition, so it makes a lot of sense that traffic operations has thought of that. And then finally, and no, we've talked all this about the traffic study, who is it within Lakewood who has the authority to approve traffic studies?
The Transportation Engineering Division within Public Works.
Right. And so that's not the planning director. So I think it's good to get all this on the on the public record just because the public is curious about it. But for clarity, you know, Director Parker's decision that he's delegated to us does not include approval of any traffic study.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. I'm not seeing anyone jump at, jump at anything. I'll, I'll come back to my one last question of the night. We've heard several public commenters on this issue. It is absolutely true and indisputable that the code says that, you know, the major site plans must meet the approval criteria in Articles 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 13, and so forth. The clear text of the code also does say on the first page of the zoning ordinance that all land use decisions shall be consistent with the goals and policies, the comprehensive plan, and the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. And, you know, a lot of the the criteria in chapters three through eight and 13, you know, they are, a lot of them are very objective and, you know, yes, no, as someone said earlier tonight. And I think maybe even the public has a lot of recognition of that and that, you know, the the main arguments against the site plan on the merits tonight that we heard were these kind of more subjective things about, you know, qualities and characteristics and that it's somehow not compatible with the intent of the comp plan or the purpose and intent section in the zoning ordinance. So just, I would appreciate planning staff walking us through in a general way for site plan applications. You know, to what degree and what process do you consider those kind of considerations on any, on any site plan? You know, the plant, the code does clearly say that all land use decisions have to be consistent with the goals of the comp plan and that purpose and intent system. So approving a site plan is a decision. So it can't be totally neglected and these are more subjective things, but what's your what's your general process and approach for dealing with those requirements?
Our process is to review the articles and standards that are spelled out that are applicable to the site plan approval. That's Articles 3 through 8, 10, and 13.
Right. And can you expound upon the rationale of why that is the correct approach to ensure consistency with the comprehensive plan and the purpose and intent of the zoning?
So Article 1 is really purpose and administration of the zoning ordinance and a lot of the sections that were referenced today in public comment are really how the standards that happen within the zoning ordinance in Articles 3 through 8, 10, 11, 12, how they are to be handled and managed. And so the purpose and intent section is really saying what the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance is. It's not necessarily purpose and intent or applicability to a specific site plan.
So staff's interpretation is that that section is is more applicable to justifying why the criteria in chapters three through 13 are what they are.
Correct.
Rather than any sort of analysis of those kind of like root cause, like purposes on a high level to begin with. And that's that's staff's general approach.
And the articles in the, the standards in the zoning ordinance are based on the guidance from those other documents that are referenced. So they're created with those in mind.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rice?
And I would even go back a little further. Comp plan zoning, so the comp plans policy document, the zone district itself then is the rules and regulations that apply. And then you go to the zoning code and you're implementing that zone district. So this particular property has a mixed use core urban, Bria, am I correct on that? Which is the second most dense zoning district that we have in the city Lakewood. The more dense is the mixed use core transit, which you'll find at the light rail stops. So the, yes, the the comp plan, you'll see where there's inconsistencies and so forth, but ultimately it's the zone district that the zoning ordinance were implementing and why we're sitting here tonight.
Thank you. It's good to understand that approach. Any other questions from the commissioners? Commissioner O'Neill?
Just a question for the developers. I think I meant to ask this earlier. Is there any intention to have any affordable housing rolled into this? Any units would be nice to see that.
You know, so no, I mean, our apartment community, we market rate. I mean, that said, we've been really intentional about the unit sizes that really, you know, strive to hopefully achieve a price point that, you know, kind of falls into that more affordable bucket, but all the units will be market rate just as determined by whatever that competitive landscape amongst our competing apartment complexes will be.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioners, do we have any other questions? If not, I am happy to entertain a motion from the commission. I thought I saw you going for your light.
You beat me to it. I move to approve the. I move to approve the memo, I'm sorry, I just lost my place, the memo from staff that that makes findings affect that this proposal complies with the ordinance and also the the minor waiver complies with all the applicable standards outlined in Articles 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. in Articles 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 13 of the zoning ordinance.
And just so the body knows, before, there's a second, can we modify the motion so that it's not a motion to approve the Staff memo, but rather a motion to approve the major site plan SP 22-0010 with a minor waiver WI 24-0003, finding compliance with the applicable standards in Articles 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 13 of the zoning ordinance, and the review criteria in Section 17.2.6, 17.2.6.3.
Is that an acceptable motion to you, Commissioner Overall?
Yes, what she said.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion, Commissioners. Commissioner Overall?
I want to get some of the rationale here onto the record, because that's my understanding, this will likely be appealed either way, and so we need to justify why our decision is not arbitrary and capricious. That will be, it's my understanding that will be the standard of review on appeal. So I will go through, if folks will indulge, the findings of fact that Director Parker has made. That is that the applicant is requesting approval of a major site plan and a minor waiver to redevelop 5.05 acre site located at 77 Yarrow Street, Lakewood, Colorado, with a 411-unit multifamily residential building. The project site is located in a mixed-use core urban area. I believe that the Commission has the authority to hear this, and I appreciate that Director Parker has put this in our hands, which I agree was probably a pretty close call. I believe the Planning Commission does have the authority to consider this. I believe that the notice of a public hearing was complied with, the 14-day hearing, despite the chagrin of some of our speakers today, that that is, those are the rules, and the community may not like the rules, and this is not the correct body to fix that, nor is your staff. I believe that the major site plan with minor waiver does comply with the applicable standards, and I also want to put on the record, the reason that I believe that is because this is a comparative standard, that it is an improvement compared to the strict compliance, which I believe would not meet all of these criteria.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Yes, just one more. I believe that a formal application was provided to the appropriate referral agencies, and that this is a final pursuit, this is our final decision. So those are the findings of fact that I'm putting on the record for whoever reviews. I used to be an appellate attorney, I don't know if you might have sensed that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will speak for myself, you know, I reviewed the Staff memo very carefully, I flipped through my hard copy zoning code book here, you know, for every single item on there two weekends ago when this was first posted, to make sure I agree that all the dimensional criteria and rather the more, you know, quantitative, largely objective criteria were met, and it's clear and obvious that they do from looking at the site plan documents that are There have been a number of comments raised, alluding to the question I just asked about, you know, relationship to the comprehensive plan and the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. And I understand and respect Staff's approach, and that, you know, the purpose and intent explains the rationale for why all the criteria that follow exist. I do think that the words that all land use decisions have to be based on the comprehensive plan, the purpose and intent, mean something, though. And so maybe I would take the slightly different approach of, I did go back and look at the comprehensive plan, and to try to evaluate that comprehensive plan fairly, and does this meet the purpose and intent of that plan? So in the section of the plan that talks about growth areas, which I have on my screen on my laptop here now, this site is in the downtown Lakewood growth area. That map was shown in the Staff presentation that Ms. Pafford provided at the very beginning of this evening's hearing. And again, we did hear some community comments tonight, that they don't consider this particular lot to be part of downtown Lakewood. The comprehensive plan and its map considers otherwise. It clearly calls it out as part of the downtown mixed-use growth area. And so some of the goals for that, that the comprehensive plan states for that downtown growth area includes a goal that literally says the words, "Develop tools to encourage projects within the area to maximize the densities and building heights allowed." This is a dense project, this building is higher than other buildings immediately around it, and that is consistent with the goal for this growth area that's explicitly laid out. Now, zoning exists, of course, to implement the goals of the comprehensive plan, and so how does zoning do that? Well, in this case, the zoning that was chosen, you know, many years ago now, when the site was rezoned, was the MCU district, which, as has just been stated recently, is the second most dense zone district in our city. If, you know, if your goal of a particular area is to encourage more development there and to maximize the density and height, the MCU district strikes me as an objectively correct zone to pick, to allow a mix of uses in a district, and to achieve those goals. And, you know, I think it's enough to stop there. I mean, the comprehensive plans are, by their very nature, subjective documents, they contain a lot of squishy, feel-good, warm, fuzzy statements. It's typical, when you read most of a comprehensive plan, that it has a lot of high-minded ideals, but it's hard to pin down how they could be specifically applied to anything in particular, or else wouldn't be applicable to everything in particular. And so it's a little bit rare, in planning documents that I've seen, you know, throughout my career, to contain language that is, and maps, and long-term planning goals as specific as our comprehensive plan has, to say the way in which the orderly future development and incremental change that happens always organically and naturally in our cities is to unfold in this area that we have mapped and called downtown Lakewood, and this property is on the very fringe and periphery of that downtown Lakewood growth area, but it is clearly and inarguably pro the comprehensive plan in it. And so, you know, knowing that we're looking at a planning document that I expect to be kind of vague and not that clear, it literally says that the goal of this area is to maximize the density. The zoning district has definitely achieved that with, you know, with the site plan that has been prepared in response to those criteria that the zone district requires. You know, this is where I can easily imagine members of the public who spoke this evening saying, well, yes, but, you know, developing downtown in this way, allowing a future mix of uses, allowing high densities, that is but one goal out of many others in the comprehensive plan, and don't we have a responsibility to look at all the goals at the comprehensive plan, consider the plan comprehensively? And to that, I still say yes, that is the correct sentiment, that is what we should do. And so we are fortunate that the comprehensive plan talks about a lot of other things. You know, many people are concerned about the sustainability and environmental impacts of this project, and, you know, I hear all that, right? The Planning Commission received an interesting email earlier this week from an environmental advocacy group that spoke to the Commission about the harms of sprawl, right? It cited a study that over the past 25 years in metro Denver, you know, the footprint of the urbanized area has increased from about 700 square miles to nearly 1,300 square miles. You know, how many, literally hundreds of square miles of habitat for birds and other animals have been destroyed in that process of suburban sprawl? How much more have we developed closer to the true wildlife areas and the truly magnificent, you know, wild areas in Colorado that make the state so special by that continuing, ongoing urban sprawl? And what kind of habitat effects does that have? What kind of effects does that have on, you know, increased wildfire risk in the urban, you know, by an expanded, you know, urban wildfire interface district? You know, if we care about those aspects of sustainability, too, if we want to focus on maximizing the preservation of habitat, you know, the logical way to do that is to stop sprawl. And as long as Colorado has a growing population, as we do, and a growing economy as we do, if you just stop sprawling in there, then, you know, Colorado will quickly become even more monstrously unaffordable than it already is. The thing you have to do when you stop sprawl to, which is the best environmental sustainability solution in the long run, is to increase the density of already existing urbanized areas. And do we want to increase the density on this scale to every single bit of our urbanized areas? You know, again, I would say from my heart, no, but more importantly, I would say that the comprehensive plan that we have adopted also says no, because this comprehensive plan contained goals about increasing walkability and increasing transit usage. Again, there was a comment on Lakewood Speaks, that the WalkScore.com, it's a website that gives a rating of how walkable your neighborhood is anywhere in America, how many things can you walk to, how easy it is to do that. You know, this existing site has a walk score of 84, that's very high for Lakewood. This is one of the most walkable areas in the city. It is, you know, close to right here at City Hall where we have a bus station outside, right? You know, as someone, you know, nearly 20 years ago, lived five years of my adult life without a car, relying on transit and my bicycle to get just about everywhere, you know, locating yourself and your job, your transit was absolutely essential for my daily survival. You know, this bus terminal right outside here, which is a short walk from the site we've been talking about all evening, you know, has the number one bus, the number three, the number nine, the 11, the 14, the 76, you can go north, you can go south, you can go east, you can go west, you can go northeast, you can go southeast. You know, this is a goldmine for someone who needs to use transit. It's way better, in my opinion, if that is what I was looking for in my current stage of life, than living even next to the W line. The W line goes east and west, it goes to downtown. The bus is right outside this building, which are like, what, a five-minute walk maybe from the site we've been talking about, will take you in every direction. This is perhaps the most bikeable place in Lakewood. I know because for years I've been biking from my house to, you know, past this site and around this park, for fun, because it's a gorgeous day outside on the weekend, you know, because I just want to run over to the King Supers, and yes, I'm that weird guy sometimes who's taking my bike trailer in the back of my bike to the grocery store and got groceries and biked home to enjoy the day. It is possible to do, and to run other errands, right? You know, for people who want that, like, this is the perfect place to build something that enables that, and there's a lot of other places in Lakewood where that kind of walkability, that kind of bikeability, that kind of access to transit, even along our marquee rail line, is just simply not as good. And so the comprehensive, this is all relevant to my decision, because the comprehensive plan contains goals about increasing walkability and increasing bikeability and increasing, you know, those sustainable mode choices and supporting transit. And the way you do that is, you know, you put development, you put places where people want to be, you know, near where this infrastructure exists to do it, and this is one of the best places in the city to do it, this whole neighborhood. That's a larger reason, in support of all those goals, why the comprehensive plan also designated this as downtown and designated this as a place to focus on increasing density. So, you know, yes, our comprehensive plan is extremely clear about all those things. And I do think that the code does require me to make sure that all decisions on land use, including this one, are consistent with those goals and policies of the comp plan, and I just listed a whole bunch of them, they are in there. But I can go on, and so I will. There are sustainability goals about trash and recycling, right, about reducing urban heat island effects, these are goals in our comprehensive plan. And this site plan is specifically achieving them, and the way it is achieving them is complying with the requirements of Article 13, the enhanced development menu, which gives an applicant a list of options that they can do to obtain a number of points required based on the size of the development. This development requires the maximum 50 points based on its size, and the developer is proposing, as detailed meticulously in the site plan that was in our packet, you know, urban heat island reduction on the roof, it's, you know, onsite recycling and composting in the building, which is, you know, a choice in the enhanced development menu. And, you know, these things, I'm sure, are costing extra money, is, would the developer have done these things absent a hard codified requirement that you have to pick this or some other, you know, similar requirement in the code with sustainability requirements? My guess is they likely would have not, and my guess is that they are doing it to meet the requirements in the code. But by meeting the requirements in Article 13, they are also fulfilling goals that were specifically outlined in the comprehensive plan. And so that goes back to the relationship in 17.1.3, the first page of our zoning ordinance that said all decisions have to be consistent with the plan. That's also consistent with the plan. There's a lot of stuff in our plan that supports a project like this in a place like this. I have heard enough testimony tonight to convince me that it is absolutely true, that not everyone in our community is happy about that. Not everyone would love all these goals in our plan. You know, they have their own other considerations and reasons for not liking that. You know, but the goal of this body is to see that those planned criteria are being met, and to see that the zoning criteria are being met, and they are. It's true, and there's a lot of stuff in there to say that they are. And I will take the risk of going one step further in saying that they should. You know, discouraging urban sprawl by encouraging urban infill, it decreases building emissions, it decreases transportation emissions, it promotes all these alternative modes of transportation, as I was speaking of, all the other environmental sustainability benefits that are in this building, exactly because we have an enhanced development menu that was developed exactly because we had goals and policies in the comprehensive plan that said that we wanted to do this, and we wanted to, you know, divert more waste, and we wanted to generate less trash in our city, and now we're doing it, and, you know, we wanted to build buildings that had a less heat island effect, and now we're doing it. There's a straight line between all these things, and they are all related. And on the whole, while maybe our zoning code's not perfect, I don't think it is, we've gone in the right direction in promoting a lot of these things, and the result of that is a project like the one that's before us. So those are the reasons why I believe that this meets not just the criteria in Articles 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 13, but also the intent of the comprehensive plan and the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. I've rambled enough. Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I think the comprehensive plan is tough because it is an idea, and I think we just went through the process of updating our comprehensive plan for new ideas, but stating a lot of the same things that we've always said, walkability, connectivity, innovation, all of these big ideas that are informing zoning code. I do believe the applicant met the requirements, I believe Staff met the requirements. I think that pretty much everything that Commissioner Buckley just said, and much more detailed than I'm going to say, was, is spot on. At some point in Lakewood, as a community, we have to agree that we need housing, we need less sprawl. need less sprawl, we want people out of their cars, we want walkability, we want sustainability. We say all of these things, and as soon as we have a development before us, especially a development of some size, it's problematic. And there's, those problems are not, they're heard, they're real, they are absolutely valid on many levels, but they cannot trump the fact that we need the things that we need in this city, and this is speaking to that and answering that. So for me, it will be a yes, and those are the reasons why, backed up by everything that my other fellow commissioners have said. Also, I think the minor, not variance, but minor waiver, thank you, articulates the building better. It just is more attractive and provides more service, so I think that's a great solution. So I think I'm supportive of all of it. So thanks.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I agree with what you have laid out for us in terms of the goals of the comprehensive plan and how this project fits into it. You know, so I won't, you know, reiterate that at 11:30 at night, but what I will say is that the other thing that I want us to remember to have in the record and to make sure that the public understands is that the role of this body here today, tonight, is not to say our personal opinions as commissioners on this particular project, or to say to determine whether or not this project should go forward or not, right? We have a very specific thing that we are considering here tonight, which is the minor waiver, pretty specifically. And so the purpose of that is to make this property be better for residents, to be more attractive, to fit in with the community and all of those things, and I believe that the applicant has met that threshold, and that's why I will be supporting it.
Commissioner overall.
Apologies, that was leftover.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments? Yeah, I'll briefly say, since in my long rambling speech before I somehow missed it, I do agree that the building with the minor waiver is the more attractive building visually, aesthetically. Key to the criteria, what's the superior design? It's the building that looks better, it's the building that functions better, that allows residents to enjoy more of this outdoor roof space. You know, if we're going to count that as open space, I really do care that it's as good of a space as it can be. Well, some of that, where the waiver is, is not actually counted as the proper outdoor space, because it's relevant to the units, I should clarify, but, you know, it makes a more attractive functional building, and so I think it does meet all the criteria for the minor waiver. So. Anything else? All right, Commissioners, I am going to call for a vote. The motion on the floor is to approve the resolution that adopts the findings and a fact and order listed in the packet and approves the major site plan with the minor waiver. So a yes will approve that, and a no will not. And that passes, five ayes, zero nays. Mr. Clerk, what's the next item on our agenda?
The next item is general business.
All right. Mr. Rice, do we have any general business?
I am coming up here, so you can actually see me. Paul Rice with the Sustainability and Community Development Department. A couple of things. So as we see, Chair Buckley is here. We want his approval on the agenda for May 21st, so the packet for May 21st is probably going to go up tomorrow. It's not up today at lunchtime, if you went onsite and looked. So once you give us the okay on the agenda, we'll get the zoning packet up by the end of day tomorrow.
All right, I'll, I'll.
That's the first thing.
I'll take a look at that. I was looking at a lot of other things today.
Right. With that said, after the 21st, we have another, we have two staff items, one for plat and one for a special use. They are not available on June 18th, so we're looking at sometime July. I haven't confirmed dates for, with the applicant on those two items yet, but that's kind of your next level of business after the zoning on May 21st.
So May 21st will be zoning, and then what was the date of that plat case you mentioned?
I haven't confirmed those yet, but it'll be after the week of the 4th of July.
Okay, so not, so as of now, no meetings on the agenda for June?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Williams, did you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, that was my clarifying question, was that we had at one point discussed having a hearing on the 18th. Is that off the table for sure?
It is. The applicant cannot make that date.
Okay, thank you.
So then HME will begin polling after, essentially, for July and August. You're doing two months or three?
Yeah. Is it possible to get an answer from the commission as to availability on, and I'm going to go over a few dates, some head nods will work for now. I know it's late, so I apologize. The first day I wanted to poll for was July 16th. Would the commission be available for that?
I think so.
I'm not really sure at this point. July is a terrible month.
Why don't we send an email and we'll.
Perfect, we can do that, no problem.
And that's all staff updates.
Okay.
All right, I'll follow up with an email, and thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Just one last clarifying thing. Could something still come up for June? I don't know, of course, no one does, what's going to happen at the May 21st meeting, but it's possible that we want a third crack at the zoning. You know, there's a new draft coming out that I think we haven't seen yet, so I just don't know how much we're going to have to say about that on the 21st. So are those June dates maybe still held in reserve for?
June 18th is open, so before we leave tonight, I would ask you to, you don't have to tell me tonight, but HME is going to say, "Are you available for June 18th?" Because if we don't, so Commissioner Gribble-Unis is not. So with five commissioners, we need five to hold a hearing, so we have, we're down. So right now, June 18th is not an option.
Okay.
Yep. So, and just to clarify, it sounds like the next date for a meeting potentially would be July 16th? And I'll send over an email, especially as the day gets closer, to see if the commission's available.
So I think what I'm hearing, so it's late, with the zoning ordinance, you can always set a special meeting, and that chair can do that, which would be a study session. So that would be the, I'll have to go through and look, but we could offer some other dates in June or July, if you wanted a third meeting on the zoning ordinance.
Okay, yeah, we'll see about that when we get to it next time, I think.
All right, we'll talk tomorrow, HME.
Okay. Is there anything else on the agenda this evening?
Sorry, I might just be tired and, I'm sorry, Chair, thank you. I'm, my brain cells are tumbling around in my skull. To clarify, the 21st is the zoning hearing.
Correct.
Thank you.
Right. Yeah, and just to clarify, I was asking, in the contingency that we do not adopt a recommendation to City Council to take up that revised zoning ordinance next time, which, I don't know. I think it's possible we may not be ready, it's possible we may be, we'll just see what happens, but, yeah, we'll coordinate offline about dates in June for that.
And Commissioner Williams, since you brought up availability for, or the clarifying question for May 21st, I want to clarify with the commission, since it's just five today and we do need five for the quorum, that everyone's still available for May 21st? Perfect, thank you all.
All right. Anything else?
That is it on my end.
Okay. Does any other commissioner have any general business for the good of the body? I am seeing none, so therefore, at 11:35 PM on May 7th, I am adjourning this meeting.
Thank you.